Call a meeting to order. Betsy, we call the roll, please.
You know that all four members are in attendance this evening, with the exception of Lisa White.
Okay, thank you. And coming out of, oh, take it back, we have to approve the agenda, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented in your board packet tonight.
Still move.
Thank you, Brandon, and a second.
Second.
Is that Rick?
Yes.
Okay. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We have one item coming out of closed session tonight, and that is the approval of the minutes for closed session for January 29th, 2014, as presented in your board packet tonight. Need a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Rick, thank you. Thank you, Steve. And call the roll, please.
Yes, cop.
Steve. Call the roll.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Newses?
Yes. Waiting for...
Is the projector on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hold on. My screen went down though, so.
Oh, there it goes, okay.
Got it. Are you going to do the compliance report?
Yes.
Is that going to, we don't have anything for it, do we? No. Okay. We'll go on to communications. We have one item, that's a good news report, our ROE, which Regional Office of Education, compliance report.
We do. The Regional Office of Education visited the district and gave their compliance visit that they do every two years, and spoke very, very highly of the processes that we have in place, and the policies, and being up to date, as well as personnel records, and all those formalities that they go through, and so they spoke very highly of the staff and complimented them for being very thorough in their processes and forms and everything. So it was a very good review, and you'll be getting more information about that when the ROE gives us their letter after their audit, but they were very impressed and complimented the staff for their hard work, so. And that includes health, life, safety, as well as, they review all of our personnel records to make sure that, for example, there are, all the required employment forms are in the personnel records, as well as evaluations. They look at policies, they do, you know, all of those throughout their compliance, and it's a pretty thorough process, and so they were very complimentary of staff for all of that hard work, so.
It's a lot of work to put that together.
It is, it is, and lots of hands in it, so, very much so.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Next item we have is this opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to address the board concerning anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, thank you. And we'll move along to consent agenda. In front of you tonight's consent agenda items 6-1 through 6-9, is there anyone who would like to pull something out for individual review?
I'd like to pull 6.3.
6.3 for individual review? Is that?
Right, I'd like to table that and for further discussion in closed session.
Yeah, you just pull it now, you can discuss in a minute.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to pull anything else on our consent agenda? Not then, I need a motion to approve our consent agenda minus 6.3 as proposed in your, in the board agenda tonight.
Still move.
Thank you, Brandon, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Newses?
Yes. So we pulled 6.3, Susan, you want to, is there anything you wanted to say about that?
Well, I, we need to discuss it in closed session, it's closed session minutes.
Right, okay, so you want to table that then, and for later, for, at a later time? Okay, we'll do that then, that'll be on...
Could you put, yes.
It'll be on the next, on the next agenda, closed session for March 10th, if we can, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Next item is Personnel Consent Agenda 7-1 through 7-15. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything from that for individual consideration?
I'd like to pull 7.3.
7.3, okay. We'll pull 7.3. Anyone else? Any other items? Okay? If not, I need a motion to approve our Personnel Consent Agenda items as presented in your board packet, minus 7.3.
Still move.
Thank you, Brandon, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. And call the roll, please.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Newses?
Yes. And Susan, you want to pull 7.3?
Correct.
Okay.
I, 7, just in case you're not familiar, 7.3 is Ryan Bandi's submission of his resignation at the end of the school year. And I wanted to take a moment to thank you, Ryan, for your leadership and enthusiasm and support during your tenure. One of the things I best remember is that you were the guiding leader for some Glenwood High School seniors who put together a video over the summer, and they entered that in the Pepsi Challenge, and their video was one of the five top videos in the nation. And then, within that prestigious award, the Glenwood High School students' video won the popular vote. And then, I remember this, they got to go to New York, didn't they?
Yes.
Was it New York City?
It was on the AM.
Okay, so then, they were on MTV Music Video Awards show here, these students from Glenwood High School, Chatham, Illinois, so, in any event, thank you very much.
Okay. Susan, would you like to make a motion to accept his resignation?
I reluctantly make that motion.
Okay. Thank you. And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Linda. And again, I think from all, everybody at the board, everybody in the district, Ryan, thank you very much for all you've done.
Thank you, Ryan.
And right on yours.
And we call the roll, please, Betsy.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Newses?
Yes. Moving on to old business, PMA Financial Planning Program presentation tonight.
Good evening, I'm Howard Kraus, Vice President for Financial Planning Services for PMA Network out of Naperville. Tonight, this is the first time that we're presenting to you work with our Financial Planning Program, or FPP, if you will, that you've approved for us to work with the district. You're among about 170 districts across the state with whom we work to provide five-year projections based on current information and assumptions from the district, so what I'd like to do this evening is give you... Okay, sorry, my finger's working. The Financial Planning Program is designed to provide a snapshot in time, it's designed to be dynamic, so that as information changes, we can do that, for example, when assessed valuation comes out here in the near future, updating your actual extension from your levy back in December. As we look forward, it's also there, that one of the strengths is to be able to run multiple scenarios on a variety of issues, and be able to compare those very, very quickly. So hopefully it assists the district in some budget planning, in identifying the issues coming up, and the trend analysis, and making sure that it's fitting in with the policies of the board. So what we've done is bring together audited reports from your audit, the annual financial reports that are available publicly, and we're basing projections on your FY14 budget. We've included information about your projected tax extensions, tax rates, and everything that goes along with the tax cap, which we'll touch on a little bit further, your assessed valuation, enrollment staffing ratios driven by that enrollment increase that you're seeing, as well as information about your salary and benefits, and other district assumptions. It brings together probably 200 spreadsheets, and well over 2,000 assumptions into the model. As we do that, I would say this, the question that often comes up is, how accurate are the projections? The projections will be relatively good and accurate for the next two years, especially as we see the big unknown is probably not EAV and new construction, it's what happens at the state level with general state aid, the impact that that can have on you. As we get out further, what's most important is the trend. We use fund balance in your operating funds, ed, O&amp;M, transportation, and working cash, and use that as the marker of the financial health of the district. So that's what we're going to be focused on as we move through. Your revenue and your operating funds divided up, obviously the biggest portion from local property taxes, about 61 percent. The other local, as you know, comes from things like building rental, student fees. The general state aid, about 17 and 1/2 percent of your revenues for FY14. The other state, of course, are categorical payments for things like transportation reimbursement, special ad reimbursement. And then the federal, those grants that come to the district typically in support of special ed or students from low-income families. The key revenue assumptions, we sat down with Dr. Ruby and Patrick to walk through. We know that the Consumer Price Index for the levy that you approved in December was 1.7 percent, and in mid-January, the CPI for next year's levy was determined at 1.5 percent. And then we've projected 2 percent into the future, taken a relatively conservative view of revenues throughout. 2 percent is a little bit less than the average, but as you know, it's been very low the last couple of years, and it's been fluctuating dramatically in the couple of years before that. So this is, most of our districts now are taking an approach of about that way. You continue to be one of the few places that we work with that has new construction going on. Your location, the desirability of the community, we're estimating new property to continue to be about $12 million per year, and would note that with your tax rates, new construction, each million dollars adds about $37,000 of operating funds to the amount that you have access to. And we've put the tax collection rate at 99 percent, people pay their taxes in the community, and you're not chasing those down. State revenue, we've taken what I would, in the discussions with Dr. Ruby and with Patrick, we've taken a relatively optimistic view of where general state aid is going to go, that it will be, again, at 89 percent of what you should get, is what you will actually receive from the state this year, last year, and next year. And then we're, we're making an assumption that the state is going to get its fiscal house in order, and will get us back up to fully funding the current formula by fiscal year 18. That is clearly highly dependent on two things happening, which you may or may not agree with, but that is, that seem to be the lynchpins for the finances for the state. One, that the income tax will in fact be extended, and second, that the savings that is supposed to be involved in the pension reform legislation will largely be upheld by the Supreme Courts and be available to the legislature undoubtedly to spend in FY16. So those things go into that assumption. We've held everything else flat, both categorical payments and federal revenues. So the EAV, the equalized assessed valuation, with that $12 million in new construction, and the increase projected continues to rise. Now unfortunately, that typically would mean that you would become, in the state's eyes, more and more of a rich district, but luckily it's offset by significant increases in enrollment projections. So here's the new construction, you see you've had years where it's been considerably more than that $12 million. So general state aid revenues, as we're projecting them, we do anticipate that they will drop next year, and that reflects enrollment being relatively steady, and your EAV having gone up, but then you see it start to rise corresponding to both the enrollment's increase as well as the decreased proration going back up to 100 percent. On the expenditure side, again, for those four funds, the majority, like every one of our districts, education is highly labor-intensive, about 76 percent of your expenditures are for salaries and benefits. The remaining purchased services, supplies, materials, capital outlay, are various other object categories in your budget. On the expenditure assumptions, the key, we have your current contract expiring at the end of the year, and so we put in a placeholder for salaries into the future because they are in fact subject to negotiation. We do expect, and as I've mentioned several times, enrollment increasing, so we anticipate staffing needs to increase concurrently. Health benefits, conservative approach, 2 percent increase to those costs, and for the most part, the other expenditure items are progressing at 2 percent or equal to CPI, assuming just basically cost of living increases for those, with a couple of exceptions. Other objects, which includes your tuition costs for students going out of the district, tend to increase more than the norm, so at 5 percent, and your operation maintenance contract is projected to increase at 3 percent annually, which is part of that purchase service portion of that expenditure by. Here's enrollment projections, moving forward, and staffing then going up concurrently. Historically, when we look back, you've had some significant deficits, some of those are really a product of your building projects, improvements to the district. And you'll see down at the bottom, about the third lineup, we have a year-end fund balance, and those four operating funds aggregated together, and you can see how that's changed over a period of time from five years ago at $14 million, down to about $7 million now, but again, I wouldn't necessarily look at those from the historical point of view without seeing how much especially was, has been spent in given years for some of those capital outlay projects. When we look at the revenue projections moving forward, they are, we are expecting a decrease in revenue next year, the one that we can pinpoint is the anticipated change in general state aid, and then Patrick and I have some work to do with the revenue projections for local property taxes. It's a comparison of our projected revenues for next year versus the current year budget that we're checking. On the expenditure side, you can see there the, essentially a 2 percent increase in most of the expenditures moving forward. Since we're conservative, especially on the revenue side, and the expenditure side is growing at roughly that 2 percent, you see, we're projecting some deficits in the near future. Those deficits tend to stay relatively consistently, and as Patrick and I look at that, particularly the local property taxes, ensure that we're seeing those revenues the same, it's quite possible that that deficit will shrink, and we'll know that better especially when the final tax extensions come out in the near future. So what we're hoping there for the board, for the district to do is to identify the major issues that are going forward, and determine what your course of action is. When we look at it in something of a chart nature, this dismay, this is a little dismaying perhaps, the red line is the aggregated fund balance from those four funds, the blue line is a projection of where you would be at the low point in your year, which, for a district that receives revenue in June from taxes, that tends to be mid-May. The vertical bars are by fund, the fund balance, you see that the ed fund is the fund taking most of the impact of that deficit that we're projecting moving forward. Any questions?
I have a couple questions, please. Can you tell me, I'm looking at page 5, about the general state aid, it just seems too optimistic to me to assume that full funding will occur fiscal year 2018 and beyond. What, since you have 170 clients over the state, is that the consensus among 169 of those clients? This just, I've expressed my doubt to the finance committee members, I'm not saying anything that they haven't already heard. Do you think that's too optimistic?
We have two trains of thought, and I would tell you that most of my districts, 30 of my districts are south of I-80.
Correct, that's good.
Including, you know, Pena, Taylorville, Ball, Chatham, Pekin, Carterville, O'Fallon's, and so forth, so they're spread out a little bit.
Right.
Downstate Illinois cannot survive if the legislature doesn't fund general state aid at the current level for very long. Almost every one of my downstate districts is in financial peril if general state aid falls below that 89 percent.
Right.
And so that's the argument that most of them are making with their legislators, especially including some of you here, who have some pretty influential senators, and in Marion and Carterville, where the speaker's right-hand man on the budget is their local representative. So we're encouraging districts to find ways to, without browbeating, but rather to lay out, this is what our picture looks like with an optimistic or a more pessimistic view. The northern districts tend to be more conservative, but then they are typically less dependent on general state aid. So the two trains of thought are, or three trains, we'll drop to 85 percent and stay there, a relatively pessimistic view, stay at 89 percent without returning back to that 100 percent.
Right.
Or this view, which says, over the next few years, we'll get back to funding general state aid as revenues are available at the state level.
Okay, well, I better rephrase my question. Of your clients, are there, are, how many clients are assuming that there will be full funding by fiscal year 2018, 100 percent? How many of your clients in the state are assuming that, or are they projecting at 89 percent for fiscal year 2018 and beyond?
I'd say about 15 of my 35 are looking at this kind of a projection.
100 percent?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that about 10 of mine are looking at 89 percent.
Okay.
Across the board, as their base model.
Right.
And the other, the remaining 10 or so are looking at a very pessimistic, it's going to drop to 85 percent and stay there, or even drop further.
Okay.
And what we then do is, for the analysis, this scenario, one of the best things is, we can very quickly and easily change those assumptions and see what impact that has.
So basically, what I'm hearing is 25 out of 35 are not using 100 percent for funding.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that, that to me says a lot, because I'm always a pessimist when it comes to revenue, I'm an accountant, so, but that's good, you know, good to know that two-thirds say it's not going to be funded at 100 percent. So we'll have that discussion in the finance committee then.
So if you look at your general state aid on that chart down below, where you're really, you're targeted, or your full funding would be somewhere in the $7 million range?
Correct.
So for each 1 percent that you're prorated, you're losing somewhere in that neighborhood of $60,000 to $70,000, and as, then is, so at that full funding level, if we were to back off to the 89 percent, then that deficit projected would be down another $770,000.
Yeah, I know.
I think we're on the same track, and that's, it's, it's what do we put in as a base? How optimistic, how pessimistic?
Well, I know.
You can put other figures in.
But look at the state of Illinois, the only state that's really doing well is North Dakota. I mean, they're, they're overrun with money, so we'll, we'll talk about that in the finance committee.
Because we can plug other numbers in there.
Yeah.
So that's how we say it.
I think we should do that.
We can, run those projections.
Right, so that would be helpful.
We've got that ability.
Any other questions, comments?
Actually, I really like this report. It's very helpful, Rick and I are on the finance committee. It's very helpful, thank you.
Obviously, this is the slimmed-down version, as Patrick and Carrie can show you.
But there's a, I guess a more detailed version that the finance committee could look through?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Okay, questions? Sorry. Okay, thank you. Next item, next, okay, there, next item is our bond sales, tag team.
That's right. Hi, Tammy, hi, Anne. Hello.
Well, thank you for the next phase of your presentations for tonight, I'm Tammy Beckwith Schall from PMA, and this is Anne Noble from Stifel Nicolaus, and we're here to talk about the bonds that are coming up, and you've got three resolutions that are before you tonight, so we want to give you some perspective on those as you consider adoption of those. We'll just go through this relatively short PowerPoint, we're going to break the presentation down into kind of two sections. The first relates to the bonds that are being sold as part of your overall referendum plan that was successful a couple of years ago, and then Anne's going to go into a discussion about what we're refunding, what this financing approach is like. So we're going to have some bond sales coming up here in early to mid-March, and the first part, the Series 2014A and 2014B bonds are tied to the referendum, as I said, and it's part of the successful referendum in November of 2012. Up until this point, the district has generated about $17 million of proceeds for the project, so you can see you've got a balance still to issue. The 2014A piece, and we'll show you some numbers in a second, but it's a very small piece of it, it's a restructuring that together with the 2014B bonds, which will generate $6.9 million of proceeds toward your referendum-approved projects, those two transactions, when issued, are being structured to accommodate the board's goal of the 70 cent tax rate in the bond and interest levy. I know the numbers on here are very small, but if you can, can see these at your place at all, this is just tied to the overall plan, again, of the Board of Education, and here we've got your previously issued non-referendum bonds, and there's referendum bonds here in the middle, bonds that have been issued in the past, and the column shaded in green are the referendum bonds that were sold in 2012 and 2013, generating the total proceeds of $17 million as we talked about, and here's tentatively what's in place for the transactions in March. So you can see here in this column, relatively small bond issue, just restructuring some of your debt that tied with the 2014B bonds, everything kind of put together with the puzzle, into the future, we have bonds tentatively slated for 2015 and 2017 also, the 2015 will be another restructuring of some of your bonds, so there's some bonds that are callable, and tentatively slated for 2017 is the final issue of bonds tied to the referendum of $11.1 million. And again, everything fits into the puzzle, so if you look all the way over on the right-hand side, that bond and interest tax rate is 70 cents, all the way down, based upon an assumption of... 70 cents, all the way down, based upon an assumption of EAV growth of 2.6% per year. And we know that, again, that puzzle, the pieces left in 2015 and 2017, again, it's a plan, but we know that we can make adjustments to those if we need to, based on the potential draw schedule of your projects. If it needs to be accelerated at all for some reason or stretched out, we have ways to address that going forward. But that's the plan that we have in place right now. Okay? Any questions on that so far?
Anything, board members?
But we have to use the bonds within a total of five years, isn't that correct?
That's right.
You have five years to issue the bonds when the referendum passes?
Okay.
So you have till 2017, till the November of 2017 to issue them. You're correct, there are IRS rules about spending the bond proceeds, but the district is certainly meeting those with its relatively rapid construction schedule.
Each time you sell bonds, you have three years to spend those monies that you sell. So the ones we're talking about selling next month, you would have three years from next month to sell, to spend that 6.9 million.
Okay, Ann's going to go into a discussion on the refinancing piece.
So we are selling, as Tammy indicated, the majority of the bonds next month for the referendum-approved project funds. The goal is that the bonds we sell next month don't exceed $10 million because we want them to be what we call bank-qualified bonds, which means that any bank that purchases those bonds gets some special tax incentives for buying them. And in turn, they're willing to give you a lower interest rate. We have a little bit of room left in that $10 million limit after we fund those project dollars and that little bit of restructuring that Tammy mentioned, to address some potential refinancing for you that we have discussed with you previously, but just to go through it briefly. The district sold bonds in 2010 as part of the R program, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, I can never remember what that acronym stands for. They're otherwise known as Build America Bonds, or BABS. Those bonds were sold under a program where the district was to receive 35% subsidy from the federal government on your interest expense, basically lowering your interest expense on those bonds. Through sequestration, you are not receiving your full subsidy from the federal government. Your subsidy has been reduced by 7.2%. Due to that reduction of subsidy, you do have an opportunity to refinance those bonds. So what we're proposing is that we fill the gap between the bonds we're selling for your referendum projects up to the $10 million limit by refinancing a portion of your 2010 bonds. We can't refinance all of them without going over that $10 million number, and we don't want to do that because that costs you an interest expense on your referendum bonds. But we can refinance a couple million dollars of the 2010 bonds and take away the risk for you of that loss of subsidy from sequestration. So the proposal is that the 2014 C bonds will basically refinance a portion of your Build America bonds that you sold in 2010. This is the analysis that shows you the savings associated with that. These are savings net of cost. So new debt service compared to old debt service, you can basically just look at the yellow highlighted column there, it's $86,000 of interest cost reduction. And that's about 2.7% of the bonds that you're refinancing. Our threshold, our minimum for you proceeding on this is that it needs to save at least 1% after you pay your costs. So we're at 2.77% right now after costs. And this is, the savings, this first analysis assumes that you get your full subsidy on the BABS from the feds, which right now you aren't getting. This analysis assumes what you are getting, okay? So the savings go up if the feds continue to cut you back on your subsidy. So we've showed you the savings both ways. Sadly, they can end sequestration, they can increase sequestration. You basically have no control over that subsidy and how much of it you're going to get over the life of the bonds. And that's what gives you the opportunity to go ahead and refinance it. And as long as you can get savings by refinancing it and remove that risk, we think it's worth pursuing. So that's the third segment of the bond financing that we're proposing for March. So we're funding 6.9 million of building projects. We're doing a little bit of restructuring of your outstanding bonds to maintain your tax rate at the level that you promised to the taxpayers. And then the small refinancing, which is about 20% of the 2010 Build America bonds. So we'll still have more to come back and do another day, but this takes a bite of it and still maintains that $10 million limit so we can get that bank-qualified benefit for you. And then we just give you the historical interest rates here, just to give you some perspective. We are still at very nice lows from a long-range historical standpoint. We have come up from the lows of last summer, but we are back down again after the first of the year. We saw kind of a run-up at the end of last summer and into December, really through the end of the year. Rates have dropped quite nicely this first quarter, so you're hitting the market at a good time.
In a typical week, you see $5 to $6 billion of municipal bonds in the market being priced, and right now, that's been closer to about $2 to $2.5 billion. So you've got the law of supply and demand working on your side right now. So the forward calendar for the next few weeks looks to continue to be low. So we're hopeful that that will give you some momentum until we price and result in some good rates for the district.
Go ahead.
So you have before you, we have three different resolutions?
Three.
Three different resolutions. We try to consolidate, but for some reason, the lawyers just feel like they have to.
More paper.
We have three resolutions before you tonight that basically authorize the different components of what we just discussed. So the first is the resolution that authorizes the, just the, well, what did they do there?
That's the As with Bs together.
Okay.
In the first one.
All right.
Yep. Right, so authorizing the restructuring and the new money, or the $6.9 million for the referendum projects are in the, that first one.
All right, that's great.
Second one is the refunding.
Right. So basically, we won't do the Build America bond refunding. We won't do 8.4 if the savings aren't there. We'll drop that one. But 8.3 will get done because that's funding your building projects. And then the last one simply just authorizes the escrow account that will be used to pay off the bonds that we are refinancing. There's an escrow with a bank that's created when you do a bond refinancing, and that's what the last resolution authorizes. And these all set not to exceed parameters on the, on the bond issues so that when we go into the market, we can basically pick our day, pick our timing, and then bring the final interest rates back to the Board President and Superintendent Ruby to approve.
Any questions on?
So have you priced this yet? When does that come out? In a month or something?
It's slated, like, March 11th or 12th. Just going to see what's going on in the market that week.
So then my next question is, we're refinancing a portion, what did you say? You know, restructuring a portion?
20% of the bond, you mean?
Well, wasn't it 6.9 plus a small portion to keep it at 70 cents? How much was that money?
That's only about $800,000.
Okay.
It's, it's, actually, the latest set of numbers shows me a little closer to a million, but the, you've got room in total to go up to 8.3 between the two.
Okay.
So that's where that 8.3 million comes from, is combining the two.
Okay. So in essence, let's say it's a million. We're refinancing it, but aren't we really extending the life of the debt? Isn't that correct?
For that piece, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Isn't that known as scoop and toss? You know, I mean, the, the industry term is really scoop and toss, which means that, you know, you're just shoving the debt down further on down into the future. I just wanted to double-check that I had that correct. Now, the Build America bonds, we don't know about that, correct? We don't know if that's going to happen. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, based on current market conditions, it will. But if interest rates changed, then we would table it.
Okay.
And there's no extension in the average life of those bonds. We're maintaining the repayment structure on those exactly as they are.
Okay.
So it's simply just an interest rate exchange.
Good.
Lower rates, just like refinancing your mortgage.
I don't want to do that to my fellow board member 25 years from now. So.
Okay, thank you.
The bonds that we were hit with the sequestration, that can happen every year, couldn't it?
Right, absolutely. Right, that's why you would.
How will this affect us if it's higher next year than 7%?
It, it will impact your levy because you, you have to recover that. If, I mean, luckily, this isn't a huge bond issue. This is only a $10 million bond issue. So your sequestration number is not huge. I know $10 million seems big, it is big to normal people, but in turn, in bond land, it's not massive. And the sequestration amount is not a huge dollar amount to you all. And compared to your EAV, it's pretty hard for it to impact your EAV significantly. But hopefully, we can just get them refinanced before, before you feel it. Right now, I don't think you would even say you're feeling it. But we do represent, or recognize it as a risk.
So that'll be an ongoing thing we'll have to monitor?
That's what I'm saying.
With that group of bonds?
Right. At least you have the option to refinance. Here's, a lot of your peers do not have the option to refinance their Build America bonds, and they are stuck by sequestration.
Why do we have that option and they don't?
Your bond documents, you sold your Build America bonds at the end of the authorization for Build America bonds after the market had learned how to do them, basically. You were able to take advantage of some of your peer institutions who sold on the front end.
So somebody else was the guinea pig?
Yeah, right, and you weren't.
For a change.
You got to take advantage of their experiences. So your bond documents have that built in, and a lot of districts don't.
Any other, any other questions, board members? No? Any other comments? No? We tried to do this, if I remember right, we tried to sell these Build America bonds before, and the market just kind of tanked on us or whatever, and we pulled it back.
Yeah, I remember that graph. We looked at the interest rates. We had it queued up to go in late summer, and the market ran away. And it just, it took away your savings, so.
It doesn't make any sense to refinance those if we're not going to save any money doing it, right? So, okay. Okay, now we have three resolutions in front of us. 8.3, thank you very much.
Thanks, Sam.
8.3, this is for the, this is a 55-page document. I don't know, Betsy, if you, I hope all my board members, all the board members have had a chance to look at it, but it's a 55-page resolution in here, as they said, it's, it's the lawyer stuff. So that is, that is that I hope everybody's had an opportunity. There's nothing in there, really, that's out of the ordinary, though, that we should necessarily have to. Okay.
I think we hit the high points of, in the presentation of what's covered.
Okay.
And it would be almost identical to the one you did last year for the, for the bonds that you sold for the referendum projects.
Gotcha.
Jim, do we have counsel review these, or?
Bond counsel.
Yes, bond counsel.
Bond counsel, check my color.
Yeah.
So this resolution is providing for the issue of a not-to-exceed $8.3 million in general obligation school bonds, Series 2014 of Community Unit School District Number Five, Sangamon County, Illinois, for the purpose of building and equipping additions at certain of said school district facilities, constructing improvements in and about all of said school district facilities, and refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. So I need a motion to approve the resolution as stated in your board packet tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Rick. And a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And call the roll, please?
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Lucius?
Yes, thank you. The next resolution is for 2014 C bond resolution, and it is almost as long, 51 pages only. So we reduce that a little bit. But it's a resolution providing for the issue of a not-to-exceed $8.8 million in general obligation, limited refunding school bonds, Series 2014 C of Community Unit School District Number Five, Sangamon County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. Just need a motion to approve that resolution as stated in your board packet tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. And a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Call the roll, please?
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Last item we have here is, I think it's 22 pages for the last one. It's a resolution authorizing and directing execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of taxable general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2014 A, which we voted on in the first resolution, of the Community School, Unit School District Number Five, Sangamon County, Illinois. And just so I, make sure I understand this, when we sell those bonds, this money goes in, that money goes into this escrow account so that then it is then available to pay off those bonds that we, those bonds. So need a motion to approve that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please?
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Lucius?
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, next item we have tonight is our construction update for Phase One and Phase Two construction. Dave Murphy. And you have your, you have some information in front of you tonight that we'll go over, so.
I'll show you to step up and talk about progress with the last review.
Okay.
We'll get started at Glenwood Elementary. We're in the finishing phase right now as far as inside the buildings. Two of the, two of the wings, C and D, we have flooring going on. And all the units are on, all the rooftop units, as well as the geothermal units, are running and are working well. So we have permanent conditioned air now instead of the debris. Unit A is falling a little bit behind, but it's catching up really quick. We're getting to start, we're getting ready to start floor finishes in there next week. So we're hoping, first week in March, we're going to be pretty much done with the buildings. And then, once the weather breaks, we'll get back to site work, putting in the Unit A roof piping, as well as the playground, yeah. So that was moving very smoothly. Over at Ball, we're pretty much done. We had a little setback with the electrical supply for the rooftop unit, or, I'm sorry, the heat recovery unit. We're getting that corrected, and we're going to hopefully get that unit running, and then we'll be in final cleaning, closing out that project. And then over at GIS, we're tracking along really smoothly. Again, doing finishes in there. We'll be looking at, hopefully being done, not hopefully, we will be done, by, before spring break. But we're getting real close to getting all the finishes wrapped up in there as well. So we're in the final home stretch now of these, so.
Okay.
Skylights are up in all of them.
Any questions of Cory?
Any questions of Cory?
Yeah? No? Okay, thanks, Cory.
Hi, it's Mike. Talk about Phase One financials and.
She just can't, can't read very well. We have actually an updated one as of today that's got just a couple of very minor number adjustments on it. We were unable to add any other shaded lines. You know, the shaded lines show the contracts that are, that are. You know, the shaded lines show the contracts that are, that are closed out. We weren't able to add any more this month. But we've got a couple of them that are right on the verge, so I would imagine we're going to see a couple more next month. Overall, you are about $11.5 million paid out on Phase One. And changes are holding still at about 1.3%, very close to what I think was 1.26 or 2.9 last month. So things are still moving along. Cory went over all of the, you know, the three addition projects that are going to continue for another couple of months or so, you know, before they get closed out. But the other projects that are on here, we're waiting for warmer weather. We have some roofing work to complete at Ball from some of that that happened last summer. A little bit of the parking lot work also needs to be completed out there, so they'll just kind of dribble along as we go. That's really kind of where we are. David, I think, might have added since the last time, a couple of, a couple of items in the FFNE column. About to track those. As he gives them to me, we add them to the, add them to the list. I think I gave, I think I gave this chart to David on, it was dated the 18th, that's the one that's up here. But the one that you have in front of you is dated today, so it's got just a few more numbers revised on it. Any questions?
I have a question to Dave and you. Okay, so I'm looking at the FFNE budget of 369, 139, it's at the bottom of the page. And then, do you see that post-bid project budget? Okay, then I'm looking at FFNE actual to date, that's 125. Okay, now, what I'm wanting to make sure of is that at some point along the way, you, Dave, you, Mike Sellers, and Chad Kent have adequate amount of technology but, money in Phase One, because it does us no good to have the buildings ready and not have the tech ready. So Chad, my problem is, I've been looking at this 369, 139, month after month, but I also remember Mike saying a good portion of this will be devoted to Dave Murphy. So where do we stand with this, gentlemen?
I don't, I guess I don't understand.
Well, supposedly, there's a budget of $300,000 per tech.
No, it's not $300,000 for tech. Chad has pulled that budget. I think it was Mr. Shannon.
What is the budget?
Right now, the total current budget as of today was 172,000. And that's with data point included into it, which some of that has already been taken care of.
Okay, so my question at hand is, is that enough for you?
It should be fine. After we discussed it.
The reference was just about when he heard that it was over $300,000, he was more comfortable than when previously.
Well, the original number was 75, that was ridiculously low.
He was nervous back then, is what Chad was saying when he was communicating.
And then it's now up to 172, is that correct?
Right.
And that's okay with you?
Right.
That's, yeah, that's his, his figure he's created.
Okay, perfect, because it's going to be foolish to open up the brand-new schools and not have the tech up too. Okay, thank you. That's what I need to hear, Chad.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment on our 1 point, what was it here? 1.3% of change orders on this, which is typically in a projects of these size that we've got here. And we're looking at, our original estimated construction cost was over 12, 12 and a half million dollars and we're still at 1.3% of change orders. And I think that goes to the diligence that the folks all through the project, your Mike, Dave, and the folks at O'Shea have really held people's feet to the fire in making sure that we get what we're supposed to get without the necessity of change orders on this. And 1.3% is, I think, pretty much unheard of.
We, I think we're doing quite well.
It's great.
Actually, you're doing excellent, because I remember the change orders for GES were like 4.1%. I mean, just almost three times more than what you have.
We usually budget about 10% in something like that.
In all fairness, you know, there's what, 15 different projects on here. Some of them actually had, had no changes and so that kind of averages out. You know, if you look at them across the board, some of them would be more than 1.3%. But overall, you know, we're trying to, trying to keep the whole picture, you know, focused.
Okay, well, thank you for everybody's diligence on that, because it's, makes the job a whole lot easier when we've got money left over at the end, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well Cory, Cory can attest to, you know, there's, there's, there's money, unspent money, contingency money that, you know, revert back into the, to the key.
Right.
You know, when these three addition projects are done, so.
It's a good thing, okay? Anything else, Mike?
The only, yeah, Phase Two, very quickly, I only have one other real quick comment. Phase Two, these color drawings that you have here, this is just more for information only. Last board meeting was projected to be kind of long, so we kind of held it off. We've been working on this since November. We've had a couple of meetings with GMS administration staff, trying to come up with a good conceptual plan for the bus loading and unloading at GMS. You know, last year, last summer, we changed the parking and drive situation at Ball. GMS is supposed to, to get a new parking lot and drive system as well. These are, just very quickly, Option A, we're looking at a couple of different options. And I think the administration and staff has kind of expressed more of an interest in Option B, which kind of keeps the bus loading and unloading in the back of the building, very much like what happens now. But it's going to take some realignment of the drives and so on and so forth to make sure that we can stack enough buses back there. The other option that we looked at, we were kind of brainstorming in a couple of these meetings about what would happen if we tried to do the bus loading and unloading in the front of the school. And in order to, because of the physical site constraints, we could not stack them in along the line as you like to see. We would have to have two-way bus traffic out there, kind of like what we did at Chatham Elementary School a few years ago. That works well. But to make a long story short, after a lot of weighing back and forth, I think the administration and staff still thinks that the building overall is better suited to allow students access out of the north side of the building. The building more easily accommodates, you know, allowing, you know, people, students to stage out of that area. And so that's what we're kind of leaning toward. We just did get the survey completed, you know, with all the snow and everything, and we did get some borings completed. So we're ready to really start taking off on that. We have been working with the administration staff, making sure we're doing the right things, but there'll be some changes out there, you know, particularly, you may not notice a lot, because conceptually, the buses, you know, would go around to the north side of the building and stack up there and, and then leave pretty much the same way they do now. Cars in that approach right now come off of Chatham Road and there's a real bottleneck there with the light and everything. So we're trying to smooth that out by, by queuing the cars in the parking lot between the middle school and the football field, and then letting them dribble out, you know, as they can access to pick up students in the vehicles in the front of the school. So we are listening and, but we're not quite there yet. We just thought the board might want to be informed on what's going on.
Is there room in the parking lot, though, to stack the cars?
In the east parking lot?
Correct.
Yeah, take a look at, that's on the second sheet.
Option B.
See how we would, we would have a new cut where you would, right now, where the cars come out of the parking lot, there's one cut up there. We would provide a new cut so you could stack one, two, three, four, five rows of cars in there. And there would have to be a monitor out there that would queue the cars, but what it's going to do is relieve a lot of the congestion on Chatham Road, which is.
And teachers don't park there?
Well, yeah, we wouldn't need that. Teachers would be more towards the north end of the parking lot, so. There would be a significant amount of work going on on the north side. You notice we're trying to stack 14 buses. And I think realistically, they run 11 or 12 right now. We're trying to, you know, provide a little bit of extra expansion. And in this approach, you notice that there's a, there's a whole other road that we've got a lot of future expansion in, so. And where we are in that project. And that project will, is planned to be bid this spring for work to happen at that school this summer.
This spring, how, how soon? You said you're going to bid this spring?
We'll bid this spring and soon as school is out, if school is over for this year, work would, would start out in the parking lot.
I just wondered how quickly you need board.
It's on the schedule right here. It's on the schedule. It looks like out to bid on April 24th, May 19th would be to the Board of Education. This, this right here.
Yeah, all these projects, by the way, when they go out to bid, they come back to you for approval.
Oh, that's right.
We've got all these, all these set up around your board meeting dates, you know, right in the bid around that cycle so that it's timely. They don't have to wait for, you know, a full month to get under contract, you know, once we open bids, assuming we've got, you know, good bids. Because there's a lot of, in some of these projects, there's a lot of material and items that need to be ordered and be ready to go so that they're here in the summertime. But I think if you study that schedule, we've got it pretty well laid out. There's a lot of these projects that are, that are coming up here, so. Matter of fact, tomorrow, GIS Interior, there's a pre-bid meeting on that. Thursday, GMS, another pre-bid meeting on the HVAC for GMS. And then the sixth, I think, of March is when we start opening the first of these bids and it just progresses up until, till sometime in May when we should be through most of them.
Thanks, Mike.
I'd like to introduce some new information also.
Sure.
At GS, GHS this past weekend, we had some asphalt fibers and they were severe in nature. Cory, his folks helped us out on a real, real flagrant, had our bus drop-off and our parent drop-off out front, thankfully. But we, we have some challenges that we're now uncovering that we didn't anticipate. And we're waiting on board, board sampling to tell us exactly how extensive this problem is. So the project may have legs, it may grow a little bit, but we need to identify what the problems are and how to make correct. That GHS parking lot is scheduled to happen, you know, this summer as well, so.
I assume everybody saw those pictures that they sent out with the, and that's right in the middle of the bus lane, right?
It is.
It's right there at the corner where that goes around. We had some similar tear out where it turned when it went on the ring road there too, right? And that, that was changed to concrete when we, wasn't it, when we changed, when we did the GES work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the preferred material is concrete, you know, whenever you've got buses rolling. That's what we did at Ball. I think what David's talking about is on the west side where buses drop off and pick up students, that has always been planned to be tear off, tear out the 25-foot wide bus lane and replace it with concrete. What he, what he found this last week, though, on the east side where buses come in and apparently must drop off, you know, sports, you know, going to the gymnasium and so on, you've got some of that going on there too. And that was never, that side of the lot was planned to be seal-coated and cracks filled and restriped. We may be into some more drive replacement on that side. That's what Dave's kind of, we don't know yet. We, we've had the survey done and it did come out and drill some borings and the problem is it looks like we might have some, some, some good old mud where we should have rock and that doesn't, doesn't work very well, so.
How often do you have to re-asphalt like a parking lot? What's the life of asphalt?
That's a very good question. It just depends on use, you know, what the traffic is on it. But, you know, there is a maintenance on asphalt. You know, there's less maintenance on concrete, you got more restriping to do on concrete than you do, you know, replacement. But asphalt should be seal-coated, you know, every few years, you know, to keep it.
Sealed.
Keep it sealed.
So when you are, some of those numbers are re-asphalting, is that sealing or is that putting down brand-new asphalt?
Re-asphalting is, well, you know, if you're going to, if we got bad areas, we need to cut those out.
Okay.
And replace them with new asphalt. But, you know, the key to asphalt is you got to have a good gravel base underneath. You need that on, under concrete too, but concrete is a little more forgiving, because it's thicker. But, you know, it's, it's ongoing. You know, you have, you know, if you do concrete, you can never seem to be able to get concrete in projects. Years ago, we used to bid them as an alternate, just hoping that we would, you know, have a contractor that was really aggressive. That's what happened at Ball last year. Actually, the bus lanes were always planned to be concrete, but the rest of the parking lot was going to be asphalt, thick asphalt, but asphalt. This, the contractor that did it came in aggressively and decided he wanted to do it all concrete. So that's, you know, in your benefit and actually came in right on budget, you know, with that, which surprised everybody, but that's why you see so many asphalt lots around, because they're more economical to do the first time.
But not to maintain.
Constant, constant maintenance on those things.
And of course, we have Phase Two. We do have another speaker tonight, right? You want to talk to us about the guaranteed pricing?
What you have in front of you, I believe we have a handout, two-page handout. And what we have is a statement of probable cost for our.
Yeah, I sent it, I, you're, you're getting it.
Yeah, what this is, is an estimate at this point. As Mike said, we have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow on this project and we have, we're receiving bids, opening bids on the 6th and presenting the guaranteed maximum price on the 10th at the board meeting. So we really are kind of a shorter schedule than we normally have on, on getting everything done so that we can get this project out for bid. And to say that this is a difficult project would be kind of an understatement in terms of not only design, what Mike said to do with the design, but also in the construction, given the short duration of the project through the summer. And quite a bit of work goes into this school through those, through the shorter summer months that we have this year. So quite a bit of work to do in the kitchen. The commons area gets filled in. The administration area gets ripped out and the classrooms put in. The fieldhouse gets two new classrooms and a new storage area, new bleachers in the fieldhouse as well. And then renovation of the industrial arts area. And then an alternate bid for the renovation of the home act area. So there's really five pretty decent-sized areas that, that need to have some renovation work. And Cory's going to be challenged with this one, but he's up to the challenge. He's already got a pretty good plan put together and we've actually got some legwork done on the initial studies for what we're going to need to do for the summer. Dave's been working on that as well. And Mike's been working on it since November, like I said, so. Not to bore you with the details, but basically this spreadsheet is our, our estimate for the project. And the most important part of the estimate is, of course, that the bottom line, that we are within our budget at this point with our, with our totals for the project. We are to the good by about $100,000 right now in our estimation. And we hope that we're conservative on our estimate at this point so we can actually come in with better numbers than what we have here. We talked about a couple of things that we can do during bidding that the district might want to consider. One is, instead of reworking some ceilings, we're going to rebid, putting in some new ceilings and. in one area, which would be the commons area of the project. We think that that might even be trading dollars, so we're not really adding a lot of cost to the project, but an opportunity to dress up the main area just a little bit. Alternate bid number one is that renovation of the home ec area and doing a little bit of work, mainly HVAC work and some plumbing and electrical work in that area. That's kind of a safeguard alternate bid, just so we have some flexibility on what we do with the numbers when we accept the bids, look at the bids and accept what we have. Similar format that we've used on our other projects. If there's any questions on what you have in front of you, I'd be glad to answer those with whatever I can.
Nothing? Okay.
I have a question. So you're taking this out to bid, but in essence, this was part of the initial planning? Is that correct or?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what we do along the way during our design phases is we actually put numbers together to kind of keep us within our guide, guardrails of where we should be cost-wise for the project. This allows us to give it a kind of a real world view of the design versus the cost. And Mike is probably the best architect we've worked with in terms of keeping that aspect of the project in check. So we've been able to really work well and I think the results of the first phase of the projects is a good indicator of that. The other factors, of course, are the market and what does the market drive in terms of subcontractor and supplier pricing that we're receiving. And again, the market is still very good for bidding right now, so we're seeing really good bids as a result. Some of these prices that you see here, these estimates are actual subcontractor check numbers, so we don't just make them up. Some of these, actually, we did receive contractor numbers and we actually boosted a couple of them because we thought, we're not quite sure if they're like the lower numbers, so we wanted to kind of factor that accordingly and get a little bit better conservative numbers on them. But at the end of the day, it's a guaranteed maximum price and the school district is, gets the savings back. So we're trying to save anything that we can along the way. And Corey's been doing a very good job along with the rest of the team.
See, Patrick, doesn't our school policy, didn't we, you know, encounter this before with GES? Do we actually pay an extra 15, like 16 grand on liability insurance? I thought our regular policy covered that. Is that correct?
It can be set up differently.
Yeah, I mean.
In terms of that, I mean, there is general liability, but construction is also different.
And you're probably just putting that in as a placeholder, right?
Yeah, so we, that might, we'll have to look into that. We'll double check the GES.
Just as a conservative.
Yeah, the main thing is the, you know, the school district carries the builder's risk, which is pretty common. And so, yeah, we feel really good about this project. This is the easy part, considering what we're actually have to do when they go through the construction process.
A couple of open items are fire alarm telephone data, how we filled in, Chad and I have time to sit down with subcontractors. Any other questions, though?
Anything else? Thanks.
I have a question on the schedule. Also for next month, it looks like GMS, HVAC. What exactly are we doing with that?
GMS HVAC is the old high school science wing, the 92 science wing. It's getting unit ventilators removed and a new geothermal variable rate refrigeration system added to that. Just very similar to what we did at Ball, only Ball did not have the geothermal component. So that's about 20,000 square feet, building addition, the old science wing. It's getting a new mechanical system.
So will that whole building be complete now, completely updated?
I think so. You did some, over the past few years, you've done boiler work in various other parts. We weren't involved in it, but I think it's, I think it's been updated.
Do you have an estimate on that?
Yeah, I think it's about $750,000, roughly, construction. GIS in a few weeks is getting, is getting some HVAC work too. That's gonna roll out in another couple of weeks. And that's the fifth grade wing in the front. Again, about another 20,000 square foot addition as well as a few, few other areas, three areas, I think, in the building that's gonna, it's gonna be revised to this new heat pump, this new geothermal system.
If I remember right, those two additions are about, built about the same time, aren't they?
They are.
And it's kind of an end-of-life cycle type of?
Like '92, '93 vintage, you know, when a lot of that stuff went on.
And so they still have individual room units, is that correct?
They have individual unit ventilators that are very inefficient for today's HVAC systems.
And in fact, the rooms in the science wing weren't saved. Is that?
We had some mold issues out there.
Well, ventilation, looking away at the science equipment.
That's, that's the trouble with the old unit ventilators, you know, they were set up to bring in a lot of air, but over the years, the dampers and things fail and they don't work and so they don't ventilate the spaces like they're supposed to. So the new systems that we're putting in are much more foolproof and they are geothermal where we can, so they're getting as efficient as we can, as we can make up, you know, for large, for large spaces.
Any other questions for the team? Okay, thanks. Appreciate it, really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, some discussion about board goals. We've got a copy of what we've talked about so far, and then do you want to make any kind of?
No, I just put it on for the finance committee meeting talk.
Okay. It's, was there some, some discussion about some of these goals in finance committee?
We, actually, we did. I put together a draft of the fiscal responsibility, the financial goals, and Linda and Rick and Patrick and Kerry and I, you know, looked at them, provided some input, but it goes to the full board. But it's a good first draft in the sense that we've taken a look at it and so that part.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Susan. The conversation kind of ensued then about the rest of the goals and whether or not, you know, you want to schedule a meeting or, you know, and really, I just said I'd put it on the agenda for that conversation, if you want to schedule another meeting for the board. That was the conversation.
It's time for our level set here. There haven't been clear board goals within the overall strategic plan of the district forever. And as we, as a consultant come in, we talked about clear goal setting. We started that exercise. We have a couple, three meetings on it now and do have the framework out there for board goals. Kerry brought in administration and we had a meeting here so that we could be transparent and have the input of a lot of the staff as well, administrative staff, as to what their needs are and try to steer this district in a way that is going from strategic plan to board to superintendent and all the way down into the classroom. So I think we've got a real good start here on some goals. We've got, they've been ranked, there's been input from a lot of stakeholders and it is time though to, we can polish these things for a year and never be done with them. At some point, we need to put them down and move on and be clear on what our direction is.
I would like to say, let's not do it in two-hour stretches because we just get going and then two hours passes. So I think we should, you know, devote a Saturday morning or whatever and try and take four hours and really do a good job and finish it up. Does that sound okay to you, Linda?
We definitely need to finish it and you do have to have time to do it. And I think it's important that the whole board will have the opportunity to discuss the goals and get it, something that is something we all, if we need, we might need to do for our district, right? And I think that's a plan. So I think we should schedule a meeting to do that.
We'll take a look at some calendars because we've got a number of things coming up here in the next couple of months, so we'll have to take a look at calendars and see what we can, see what we can set up, so, okay? All right.
Sunday afternoon? Not Sunday.
Have you, if those fiscal responsi, the fiscal goals, are those something that you could send out to the whole board and we can take a look at them?
Yeah, we post them in the finance committee meeting too, so.
Have you posted those?
You know what, I think, will you send them to me electronically, Susan? And I'll make sure that they're posted to that, to that minute, or to those, that agenda item.
And I would like to thank Kevin Moore for that. He was really helpful in doing some research and I really appreciate that. You want to do some more research? This is a discussion, but it was, it was very helpful. Although it took a while for me to think about it, it still, it was very helpful, so thank you. I'll send that, I'll send that to Kerry.
Yeah, I'll just attach that and then I'll put it in the finance committee folder too.
Okay, well, thank you. Next, we have a report on Amoresco, Dave. And you've got some information in your board packet, information on board docs that was available.
I'm not gonna go through every step of this report. I'll touch on some of the highlights. Just performance contracting, I touched on that. How to select a performance contractor and some of the prerequisites for selecting.
Do you want to run the, Betsy was asking real quick before you start, do you want to run the projection, or the PowerPoint?
Do you want to run it yourself or?
Or the computer, if you wanted to show any of? Thanks, Betsy. You can see it better than that one, yeah.
Performance contract has been around for quite some time, 35 years. I would say that it is a service that can provide a service if it's utilized in the right light. You can tie guarantees to your contract to cause the contractor, the performance contractor or ESCO, to guarantee savings. That has to be written into the contract. When determining the performance contract and its application, there are some suggestions made. One that the, the project can be viable, typically a performance contractor looks for projects in excess of $100,000. Stable use of the facility. What that means is that when they look at the district, if you've got large projects that are district-wide, for instance, and you've got concurrent construction projects that are also energy-related, it's difficult to measure with any precision some of the outcomes of performance contracting. So what they like to see is stable use of the building. Stable use, it could also be, the lights have to be on between 8:00 and 4:30 and they ask that upfront. So if you're using your building at the beginning of the contract from 8:00 to 4:30 and you change it, where you use the building at the end of the contract from 10:00 to 10:00 or 8:00 to 10:00 at night, then that, that would be something they would consider not stable. The owner should consider its own financial position and the way you fund the project. There are other methodologies that you can use for projects like performance contract. Typically, that would be what a school district would do. The owner also needs to take a look at the performance contract in the light of what's in their current building. Are you up to snuff? Are you as efficient as your building? It's like GES, we've got geothermal systems there. We've got the best lighting that there is. It'd be tough for an ESCO to come in and say, yeah, we can improve substantially on what's existing. So all those are areas that, that we should look at when judging whether we need performance contracting. Let me just drop down here. Are there any questions about stipulated versus measured and verified? If you've read the document, it kind of talks about that in pretty much detail. Any question in the body of the work?
Other than, this is a very, very thorough report. This was like a third-term paper. If our English teachers see it turn up someplace, they're gonna know it's complete with footnotes and references.
I'd like to drop down to the conclusion because the conclusions are really mine and talk about those just a little bit. When you stop and think about the contract that we entered into, we had bond money available. The bad money was available. So if you were tied energy to the contract, you know, when I look at a performance contractor having been in the business, I would, selling to a district, I would say, you know, the performance of the energy sale or the energy contract, I would guarantee the savings over the life of the contract. And there are several ways you can do that. You can do that with a shared savings. The contractor receives a portion of the savings to offset his costs and interest over the life of the contract. That's one way to do it. That's a shared savings concept. Or you don't have to share necessarily, you can give it off to the contractor upfront, pay the debt off quickly. And then at the end of the, end of the contract, you start receiving the benefit of all the performance contracting. A lot of folks do that. In this case, we had some money sitting in the bank. We had money out there that we didn't really need to tie to construction using this methodology. Costs associated with performance contracting can be viewed, and this is opinion, can be viewed as kind of excessive. Having worked in the field and working for a performance contractor, 40% would not be unheard of, a markup or even greater. So if you take it out in the A&E field, you've got A&E costs, which are 10%, you've got markup on materials and goods and contractors, probably another 40%. About 10% difference now. When I, when I look at what was done, the RFP document by the, was provided by the performance contractor instead of the district and it, to my knowledge, has never evaluated by the, the contract itself was evaluated. And the reason I bring that up is that they met the letter of law. They did do that. But at the end of the day, they hit the minimum of the letter of law. What I mean by that, there is an opportunity there to bring more, more contractors in, more ESCOs. If we would have extended the bid timeout instead of two weeks to the four weeks that is currently. Use of unknown in out-of-state contractors as well. Well, there was only one person in the district that I think really knew Amoresco at the time. And bringing folks in from out of state created us some issues. One of the issues it created was that paperwork, managing the health life safety portion of the performance body. We had to bring in Graham Hyde to help Amoresco get through some issues with health. We had to bring in Graham Hyde to help Amaresco get through some issues with health-life-safety paperwork. It's tedious, time-consuming. There's a lot of work that goes behind that effort that most folks don't see. And Graham Hyde was compensated by Amaresco for that effort. At the time, there was no construction committee in hand, so many of the decisions were made by a person. Which meant the oversight was assigned, that was left to a person. And as a for instance... This is our certificate of place, and I want to back up just a little bit. We were offered some value-added services. Right down here, it describes what value-added services were. Well, the reason we got value-added services was that the director of facilities never had a contract, the official contract, till the end of the project. And based on discussions throughout the RFP, there were some comments made, or they alluded to, that every light in the district could be touched, replaced. Well, because I didn't have a contract in hand, I kept asking to do more and more pieces of that were being left behind. So the value-added was things that I saw didn't get completed as pieces that were changed out, in my mind, because I didn't have the original contract. So the value-added portions were canopy lights, flagpole, sign lighting, additions, common lighting, upgrades, traffic lighting, mechanical room lighting. When you stop and think about the cost for that, and the fact that there was no charge, kind of led you to understand that there may be some excess in the way that the project has been. Now, having said all that, performance contracting, in this case, did save us money. What I'm showing you here is, if we could go back to the body of the discussion, it would show that between this time in '09, and this time in, or excuse me, this time in '08, no, '09, and this time in '10, the traffic light out in front of GMS was performing at this level. And this is use right here. This tells you how much use. After we applied, or applied the measures to the traffic light, this is the use. Okay, so we are saving, we do save. And in this case, we're saving about 65% on just that one set of lighting. And when you stop and think about that, that's only the energy efficiency. We haven't had to touch those lights in four years. Typically, we'd have contractors out here every year to the tune of about $1,500. Because we don't have bulbs, we've got LED, we're not having to make those repairs. Okay, so there's additional savings, operational savings, on top of the energy savings. Okay, Seth? This document is what I had the work from, from the power project. The revised pricing was incorrect on this document. They finally revised it. We finally got back down to the 2.2. In here, they identify, remove transformer replacement at GHS. Leave the Glenwood Elementary, or excuse me, Intermediate School. If you read the contract, the contract doesn't talk about Glenwood Intermediate at all. It talks about Glenwood Middle School and Glenwood High School. We did, we did remove the transformer replacement at GHS. We left those intact. Ten-year-old transformers, they didn't see the need. I didn't see the need to replace ten-year-old transformers. At Glenwood Elementary, Glenwood Intermediate School, we included that piece. And in the body of the Amaresco contract, it still indicates that the GHS and GMS transformers were to be removed. But we know that that's not the case. And they did revise their pricing down to 2.2, which was where we finally came to an agreement on. So I corrected that. My point here is that the, when it came to contract analysis, this is the only document I had to look at. And I asked several times for the contract. This is another spreadsheet showing the savings. In 2009, '10 through 2010, '09, we spent $157,000 roughly. The following year, we spent $120,000. The year following that, we spent $110,000. Now, when you ask me to measure and verify a lighting project like this, it's very difficult. So the way we do that, using stipulated savings, again, what we do, we look at manufacturers' data, and we compare one set of lights against another set of lights. And if it's a 40-watt consumption versus a 100-watt consumption, we recognize that they're savings. We say that's stipulated. For me to measure and verify lighting projects like this, very difficult. We've got to know what's going on in the district, what's going on in the building. We've got to be able to measure. And just as a for instance, I have pricing today of $35,000 just to measure building usage, not individual branch usage. Okay? So if I were to go out to each branch and put a measuring device on it, you can imagine the cost. It would be cost-proporting. So that's why we use stipulated versus measured and verified. That's pretty finished us up with the discussion, unless you have questions?
Questions?
Which building was that, that you gave the example for, for savings? That we saved about 30-some thousand the first year?
GIS.
GIS. Do you have one of these for all the other buildings?
Yes, we do.
Because isn't GIS our most efficient building?
No.
No?
It's not our most efficient building. It had the least efficient lighting in it. That's why I brought this forward. It showed the greatest...
So it made a good, it made a big improvement on that building?
Yes.
But like, for example, this set of results for the high school shows that we lost $26,000.
It's... Well, I think, again, it's stipulated versus actual, and you can't, you have to look at how the building's being used, and how, and when they're using it. You know, if they're using it from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, as opposed to 7:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. So, you know, to look at that, it's, to look at strictly at how much we're billing, you really have to go back and take a look at how that building is being used, and how long it's open. And if they're using, you know, those gyms probably take a lot of lighting, that sort of thing. But you really can't, it did cost us more, but we have to go back, I would say, and that's, I think, what Dave was talking about with the stipulated, is that you, we put in a 40-watt, we replaced 100-watt with a 40-watt, so we're going to save money on it. It's just normal that you'd save money in that sort of respect. But if you've got it, that 40-watt are on for 12 hours a day instead of seven hours a day, you're going to spend more money.
So we're running lights more for the last three years than we did prior to that?
I don't know. But how often do you go to that bill, how often you go by that building, and there's not something going on in that building?
All the time.
Yeah. I mean, constant.
Even prior to three years ago?
Well, true.
And I, didn't we hire somebody, or give somebody a stipend to make sure we went around and turned out all the lights? Did we pay somebody like $15,000 a year to help?
Well, they didn't go around and turn them off, but they...
Instructed.
Instructed, yeah.
People that it's important to turn them off so we can save energy.
Sure. Yeah.
And that is the position we cut.
Yep.
Correct.
That is cut.
Correct.
So...
The issue we have is how do you measure and verify? That's the issue. I mean, you tell me how long the building's been on, but is there a difference in the operation? Is there, the piece that you're missing in some cases is the labor, the intensive labor that we have to apply if you'd like the high school. And we're not applying that. The labor hours that we used to apply, which, and that also equates the savings in fluorescent fixtures, fluorescent ballasts. We were spending huge money at the high school, to the $20,000, $20,000 at the high school first year on fluorescent fixtures, which we're still spending, because we didn't replace everything. But the gym lights, for instance, we did replace those. We went from a labor-intensive system to a less labor-intensive system. The design of the lighting system back in 2000, all the ballasts were on the outside of the light fixtures. As the light, you know, was on, it generated heat, so they could go right to the aluminum shell and to the ballast. That's why we're losing ballast left over. So we went to a different type of lighting system in the gyms, and we improved the lighting. All we did, we improved the lighting, we improved the labor saves. So it was a couple of different reasons that we did these projects. It wasn't just all about energy efficiency. It was the labor it was costing us to manage some of the lighting systems that we applied on 2010.
I think those lighting systems, it was just like we were talking about with boilers and those HVAC systems. You know, they're, some of those, they, there's a natural life to those systems, and we have to replace them one way or the other.
Well, the discussion around T12 versus T5, T8, and T7, so great. The T12 fixtures, and about half the fixtures that we looked at were T12 fixtures, had to be replaced. And the reason for that, back in 2010, T12 bulbs were no longer made. So we were forced to make a decision to leave. We continued to try T10, or we go with the more efficient T8, T5 bulbs. So we made that decision.
Dave, do I understand correctly that you had the concerns about the energy savings? But yet you were not really consulted about using this company or writing the RFP?
I personally did agree with having a outside vendor write the RFP. Because here's what they did. They spent a few months gathering information about the district, and which they put together a fabulous report. However, if you stop and think about it, other vendors, when the RFP went out, they only got a two-week timeframe to get that out. By the time they recognized it, responded to it, it really went about a week. The folks that wrote the RFP had months. So we had one official applicant for that RFP, and...
That's typically not how we do RFPs.
I asked for an extension of time, twice. And I will shout that. It was based on contractor input. He did not have time to fit the problem.
Well, actually, it's, actually, you cannot, the dates got moved up between what was posted in the Illinois procurement bulletin and what was posted internally. So it should never have been two weeks. And GPS was legitimately asking for an extension because it was not posted for the requirement at the time. And it was turned out.
Now, if you look at the RFP, and some of the dates on the document, some of them are very confusing. The document itself stated the wrong date.
Dave, did we get any grant money back on this project? Because I know that was one thing that was mentioned in the minutes, that after the project, they were going to be able to secure some grant money. Do you know if we got any of that back?
You know what, I'd have to go with Pat and go back and take a look at that. I'm not sure if he did or didn't. I don't know that, I don't have an answer for that one.
And then can you say without a doubt that we received enough savings to cover our $2.2 million that we borrowed, to pay back it, plus the interest over the 14 years? Or let me phrase it this way, the money that was sitting in the bank, in bond money?
Steve, I received the contract. I had the guarantees at the end of the, in construction. So there was no time for me to measure and verify the contract. Contract was also...
So you never saw a contract?
I never saw it.
Tell me, Barry?
This contract.
Which contract's that?
That's the one that's...
Is that different than the one that was shown to the board the night they passed the resolution?
Yeah. I never received a copy of it, and I asked for a couple of contracts.
So there's two different contracts out there?
I don't know about that either. This is the only one I've seen.
And it mentions stipulated versus measured and verified in it?
No.
Could you just touch on what the difference is between the two?
Can I, or did I?
Can you, please? Stipulated means we have no guarantee.
Stipulated means that you agree to agree upfront. Now, a 40-watt bulb versus a 100-watt bulb, you never received savings.
Who's "we"?
Both parties.
Whoever entered into the contract.
But it started off...
These contracts come across my desk, and I initial off on them. I never got that opportunity.
Last month? I rewatched the video, and you told us that you watched how the contract came together.
RFP.
You watched how the RFP came together?
Yeah, we watched that. The guarantees right there, through, you know?
Okay, so it started off as a guaranteed contract, is that right? Because back in June of '09, a representative from Amaresco came and told us about energy performance contracting, and he says he guaranteed results and quality. and he says he guaranteed results and quality. The resolution that was passed on March 22th references the school code, 19B, and it talks about guaranteed energy savings. The advertisement for the request for proposals states that it's a guaranteed energy services contract. The request for proposals states it's guaranteed, but you're saying it's not guaranteed?
No, I'm not saying that. It is guaranteed, but we agreed to the guarantee through stipulated savings.
So, we're not, so, they're the same?
I'm sorry? Say that again.
Stipulated is the same as guaranteed?
Stipulated savings are, are a form of guaranteed savings. Right, right.
Here's the problem I have. We borrowed 2.2 million dollars to replace light fixtures that probably weren't broken. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,800, that was in your report? Forty-eight hundred light fixtures?
It's probably closer to five miles or better.
Okay. Somewhere there had to have been a decision to agree to agree to stipulate. Was that done in an open meeting somewhere? That's a lot of money for something that says it's guaranteed.
I don't think that the savings were supposed to be 2.1 million. I mean, if we had done the work ourselves, or if we had somebody else do it, there's, there's a, there'd be a charge to do the work. I think that was, but there was part of it in there that was a stipulated savings.
We borrowed 2.2 million dollars, this is out of our audit report. We borrowed 2.2 million dollars, and there's about nine hundred and some thousand in interest, which means we've got to pay back 3.1 million dollars in fourteen years. That comes up to about 221,000 dollars a year. Are we getting 220,000 dollars a year in savings out of, out of this project? The operational, energy, maintenance?
I, I can't answer that directly? Because the stipulated savings, I, I have to go back and measure every fixture against what was existing. And I'm not sure that I've got all that data. And then I'd have to figure out what our labor savings are, what our operational savings are long-term.
And you're not saying you agreed to this?
You know, at the end of the day, a performance contracting would not have been my methodology. I wasn't consulted about that.
For that work? For that worker in general, just for that?
For this one.
For this project?
The money, the money was in hand, okay? We didn't have to talk the energy savings. I believe that there, there was, it's a personal opinion that we would have realized more savings were covered more rapidly had we not used this, this particular methodology.
So, when this was voted upon, it was known that it was stipulated?
We voted on the resolution, yeah. I'm not sure that anybody knew exactly what was in there. I couldn't tell you that, Steve.
But we haven't even made an attempt in three years to go after any savings?
What are you going to go after for savings?
We have stipulated savings.
We have stipulated savings. You can see that in just what he, what Dave has given us.
Off of, off of one light outlet broke by the road?
No, and the, the school one too, the G.I.S. What do you want us, what are you looking to do?
I want to know how we came to a decision to go stipulated versus guaranteed, when all along it was presented as guaranteed. Show me in the school, show me in the school code where it says we can stipulate. It's a guaranteed energy savings contract.
No, guarant, it's a...
It's guaranteed that we will save money.
That's right.
How we determine how we save money is either stipulated or performance.
Right, or, or actual savings.
Can I read one point, part 1.2 in the, in the Illinois school code, under guaranteed energy savings contracts? Guaranteed energy savings contract. There's three, there's four parts to it.
When, what's the data, is there a date on that?
It's pulled off the ISB.
No, I know, but is there a date as to when that was enacted, or when that was?
It's the same as the one that's on there today. I checked it.
No, I know that, but when was it put into effect, is my question?
The implement, this is the one you referenced in the resolution.
I understand that, but those, those are revised on occasion, and I don't know...
Right, okay, so...
It's still the same. Part, part four.
When is it?
2002, I mean, there are different, there are different sections here, but like, section 519B, which is what we're looking at, that was August 6, 2002. Some more. September 7, September 11, 2000.
Well, I'm referring to the part that Steve's going to quote.
This is all section 19B.
They're, they're all the same. Part four says, and it's part one, part two, part three, and part four, "The implementation of project monitoring, data collection, to verify post-installation energy consumption and energy-related costs. Contracts shall provide that all payments except obligations on termination of the contract before its expiration are to be made over time, and that the savings are guaranteed to the extent necessary to pay the cost of the energy conservation measure."
Okay, I had the opportunity to talk with the Department of Economic Opportunity and the folks, the head of the performance contracting measures for the state. I did talk to them about the difference between stipulated and measure and verify, making sure that what I was telling them was correct. We've met the letter of law once we've determined that there is a difference between a forty watt bulb and a hundred watt bulb. Now, the O and N piece is the piece that's missing. So, the guarantee's there. We guaranteed the energy savings when we said stipulated savings. What's missing is the additional costs or savings from O and N, and how we measure those.
How, how did you guarantee that?
I'm sorry?
How did you guarantee that?
Guarantee? We guarantee that by looking at manufacturer's performance data. And we say there is a difference between a hundred watt bulb and a forty watt bulb. That's a guarantee, that's a given.
So, that's what we paid Ameresco to do, to tell us that?
We, we paid them to come up with a plan to analyze what needs to be done to, to correct our lighting issues. We, we had ten T-12 lights out there. We would have had to change out anyway. We follow that, there is labor, O and N savings by us changing those out. We would have done that anyway. You understand that? So, so, that's a piece that's missing. The energy piece. And it's pretty easy to say, you know, an LED light versus a metal halon light, considerable savings. And you see those savings as a G.I.S. effort?
A G.I.S. But we have four other buildings.
I got that.
And GHS was our newest building.
But, but hear me out. Your argument is, is self-defeating in one respect, because you're not taking into consideration we would have had to pay the labor to get the T-12 fixtures removed, rebuilt. There, there are savings to the district in having the contractor do that for us.
Were they broken at the time when we replaced them, or were they still working?
You can't buy bulbs for them. T-12 bulbs were no longer manufactured in, in 2010. That was known as early as 2003. I have people that go all the way to 2003 suggesting we change out the T-12 bulb. So, when you think of this, this project, you've got to think of more of the energy savings. There's labor savings, because we would have had to change those fixtures out anyway.
Okay, and that's, and that's represented on this sheet that was presented the night that the resolution was passed? It's got up to 50,000 dollars every year in maintenance savings, and 15,000 dollars a year in capital savings, and it's talking about 105,000 in energy savings every year, for a total of about 107.
I, I think we could hit the energy savings easily.
I thought you were going to show us.
That's, that's the question. I mean, I've already done that. I've already told you, we stipulated the savings. We said the forty watt bulb versus a hundred watt bulb. That's the energy savings piece.
That, that's...
But I can't tell you, I can't tell you the impact of HVAC on the system. We change HVAC systems, well, guess what? We now meet new customers. So, what's, what's it going to do? It's going to increase our costs, right?
True, but, but you said Ameresco was in our buildings for months going over stuff. They should have known we were going to update our air conditioners.
You're asking me to read their minds, I can't.
We didn't, we didn't ask them to do anything on, or, that was never part of any kind of a contract for them to look at anything other than, other than the...
All right, answer me this. The night that we passed the, or the resolution was passed, there was a contract that was shown to the board, and it does not contain any information whatsoever about stipulated savings. And it's different than that contract that you got.
How do I answer that? I wasn't privy to this contract.
How did that happen?
Actually, though, that, that question should be addressed to the board. You're correct about that. Because two versions exist. One, the one that existed in board docs, the, the database, did not have the attachments. The other contract...
Could we see the contract?
Does have, does have the attachments, and in fact, this contract was executed by Mr. Gillum and Ameresco, right here. Here, here's the signature block, right here.
And the one Linda has was only shown to the board, not to the public? And the one you got was not shown to the board or the public?
For a day.
But, but, correct. So, if it's got the stipulated information in it, why, that nobody supposedly knew about, why haven't we done anything in three years?
What, I'm not sure, you keep saying, why haven't we done anything in three years? I'm not sure what you're talking about. What haven't we done in three years?
It's a guaranteed energy savings contract. The code says that we have to measure and verify every year to see whether or not we're paying for the equipment.
That's not true.
Not true.
The school code's not true?
If what you read is what you're talking about there, I didn't hear that in that, in what you read.
There's a guaranteed savings. How you determine that savings is either by the stipulation or by measure and verify.
That's right.
But it is a savings.
So, you're saying stipulated is the same as a guaranteed?
I'm saying they said there is a guarantee of savings.
Who did?
You're going to save money. That's what they're talking about in the, the contract and the school code. There's, you're going to save money. How you determine that is the stipulation or...
Stipulated is here, T.
Yeah, I mean, that, that... My problem is, if you have no worksheets last month, the month before, this month, hear me out, to calculate stipulated savings, you have to have some worksheets. And Steve has asked for those worksheets for months.
But the stipulated savings is the light bulbs, right?
Well, you have to go 100 light bulbs times the savings. I mean, it's, it's a series of spreadsheets we've never seen. And Steve keeps asking. I mean, there's, to get to the bottom number, one day, you have to go, you know, 5,000 forty watt light bulbs, and you calculate it to kilowatt, right? Steve, am I right about that? 100, 4,000, I mean, you have to equate, you equate this.
It would be the same year after year, except for the increases in billings. Because you can see some difference in, you can read the K-Dat, and it's going to be the same year after year.
Well...
Because the performance is same, it doesn't change.
Well, go on, Steve.
You, you mentioned that you didn't see the legal review from the attorney. Mentioned in the resolution that, that this has to be successfully reviewed by our attorneys.
And it was.
Dave wasn't responsible for that.
Okay, that's fine.
You're right, it's the board that's responsible.
Well, it was reviewed, and there were some changes made to the contract, because there's a couple of emails that go back and forth with, between the lawyers and the district.
Okay, I, I want to make a motion that we instruct the superintendent to inform Brown Hay and Stevens that their attendance at the next board meeting would be appreciated.
I'll second that.
For what, for what?
So, I can find out.
This is an inf, well, this is information only on this, it's, it wasn't up for any kind of action.
But it was on the agenda.
And for the, you want Brown Hay and Stevens?
For what purpose?
I would just like to get their final legal review, to know that we got it, so we can wrap this thing up, put it on a shelf, so that if anybody asks us any questions, we can say, we know this is what happened.
We don't need a motion to do that, superintendent will take care of that.
Whatever. But correct me if I'm wrong, but the basis for our literacy initiative in this district that we teach all of our kids is all about understanding what they read and being able to put that into writing.
What's your point?
My point is, I'm reading through all this stuff that don't make sense, and I would like to be able to understand it, just like our kids are reading the books in the classroom.
And the part that you have the question about is the stipulated savings, what that means. Is that...
I want to see if Brown Hay signed off on this.
Well, it, first of all, it doesn't...
You said last month that we had legal review.
I said that there was some, a couple of emails that went back and forth. Now, the information that they got, I, I'm not sure exactly what information they got, because that was between the former superintendent and Brown Hay Stevens. Now, whether they got all the information, I don't know. But you can't blame Brown Hay Stevens for that.
No, I don't want to blame him for anything. I just want to get what they said was their successful review of this contract.
I think that that all came out in, in the FOIA request that was out there too. There were emails in that FOIA request that went out when that, when that document...
I don't think it did. I think, didn't you label that as attorney-client privilege, Carrie?
Probably, probably. I don't recall.
Well, they were emails, I don't think it was a opinion.
They didn't go out, because you labeled it as such. Well, my problem is, is that here we have this resolution that, by the way, has bogus dates in it. They refer to a guaranteed energy service contract in 2009. If you look at the wording of the resolution, it says contingent upon the successful review of legal, which is right here in the notes. The problem is, is that this was signed on May 28, and it's executed by Bob Gillum to, a notice to proceed on, uh, May, May 28. And here's the signature. We know that the board didn't approve the resolution, they didn't approve this until in June, their June board meeting. So, in fact, this notice to proceed was signed before the board gave a thought. Furthermore, I, we need, it's very important, because I believe Brown Hay Stevens did not, I think that they provided some of their legal observations on June 3, 2010. So, somewhere along the way, this wasn't monitored carefully.
Carrie, what are your thoughts on this? You've reviewed some of this information, put together some timelines?
I mean, I, it's difficult to recreate the history of what happened and who was where. We did, we put together for a FOIA, we put together a timeline to determine what happened at what point. And it's clear that, you know, the direction of the former superintendent was to go this route. And so, it's hard to create, recreate without putting in, into those, the conversations that happened. But we can recreate, as far as email trails go, you know, what the, what the directive was. And it's clear that Dave was given a directive that this is who he's to work with. So, is that answering your question?
So, so that in regards to the timeline, if you stop and think, they had a dreadful summer in performing the work that they had to get done in that summer. If a document was signed upfront, it meant that they could release purchases?
Actually, Dave, don't try and defend the board, please. You'll just dig yourself a really big hole. You're not, you're not... You're not, you're not responsible for that. It's the board's obligation to approve the contract. So, I mean.
I'm just trying to explain what might have happened.
It doesn't matter. I mean, don't try.
When did you, you said that that, that contract was approved when?
Was signed May 28th, approved at the June 3rd board meeting.
Correct.
Signed before the, before the board approved.
In 2010, you're looking at?
Correct. And I believe that Mr. Grenzenbach.
We didn't have, we didn't have a June 3rd board meeting in 2010.
No, but you got an email from Mr. Grenzenbach on June 3rd. But that was after this had been signed on May 28th.
See, I thought you said that the, that the.
Well, when was the, when was the June board meeting in 2010, wasn't it?
June 28th.
There you go.
But there's nothing in, there's nothing in the agenda in that that has anything to do with Amoresco, that I can see.
What about the May?
Nothing in May either.
There's nothing about Amoresco in the May agenda?
Not that I can see, no. Let me look here again.
$2.2 million is a lot of money, to not be clear on exactly what happened, and I'm just trying to get this book so we can put it on the shelf, be able to understand what happened.
There's nothing in the June board meeting that says anything about Amoresco. The only one I can find is in April, in board docs.
Isn't that what we all want?
What, what happened in April?
In April is when, April 26th, at the regular board meeting, I think it was, let me look here, is when that, when we had the resolution for, came up under, nope.
Well, Lisa Weitzel, Lisa Weitzel approved the motion to, what's the date? On March 22nd, 2010. But here's where the problem lies. The resolution says it's contingent upon a successful legal contract, correct Steve?
That's what it says.
And if that was.
A legal review.
A legal review. If, the resolution says that's dependent on a successful legal review. However, I don't think that was performed in a timely manner.
Let me get this straight, if we approved that in April, and Gillum signed it in May.
It's in March.
That's the first time.
It was in March.
It's.
It was in March of 2010.
Correct.
March of 2010.
It's not an appropriate action when the word contingent is used.
But we, we don't know what that is at this point. We don't know what Brown Hay and Stevens did.
Actually, there was an email. Carrie, you, you had it there.
That said that they looked at it. And I remember, wasn't that one?
But which version?
He said I was. The email that I looked at, it was that. He was not comfortable with some of this wording.
Right.
But to proceed, yeah, and recommended to change, as I recall, that email, which would've indicated a review. Now, the thoroughness of that review may be in question.
Well, why?
But isn't that what that email said?
Yeah, I think it's. There are a number of emails, and I think Brown Hay Stevens did their job. I, I think. I mean, a legal review typically means that there's a letter with their letterhead on it. I didn't see anything like that. I mean, this is, that's typically, when you're issuing bonds, that's typically what you need. We haven't seen that.
But let me get the timeline straight. In March, we approved it with a review of legal. Legal sent an email indicating they had looked at it. Now, what the format of their review might not have been adequate, but it did indicate that they had looked at it. And then in May, Mr. Gillum signed it.
Okay.
Now, I am not defending this contract. I am not.
No, absolutely not.
I am not defending this contract at all. But I'm, I'm, I'm understanding the timeline.
Okay, here's the thing. The resolution was passed to, here's what the minutes say. Weitzel moved to approve the resolution and contract for Amoresco as presented pending the successful completion of legal review by the school district's attorney. Okay? So, there were some emails, those emails occurred after Mr. Gillum signed the notice to proceed.
Well, okay, okay, and that may be true, and if, and that being the case, first of all, he didn't, and that's exactly right, that is wrong. He did not have the legal authority to sign that contract, it should be the board signing that contract. And I do remember an email that came that went, that Brown Hay and Stevens sent it, sent to, through the, through the loop, about some issues on the contract, and then it came back from Amoresco, that Amoresco agreed to some of those things. I don't remember what they were, I'd have to go back and find the email, but that Amoresco agreed to whatever it was.
Well, they, they cut the cost of the, of the job by a couple million dollars. They were going to do, they originally proposed.
A lot more, yes.
Yeah, four to five million dollar project, and.
So, is it a legal contract? I, I mean, I don't defend the contract either.
Yeah, but is it legal?
Well, Susan, it's, it's legal 'cause it was, I guess it's legal because it was signed. It's, it's already been, the work has already been done, and it's already been paid for. Three years ago.
I also remember that email, and he also commented that he was concerned about the language, 'cause it could affect our guarantee.
I don't, I don't remember exactly what was in it, Steve, but, you know. So, well, okay, we all.
I don't know if I can get it from here, but I'll.
So, there is a guarantee.
So what?
A guarantee of savings.
A guaranteed, stipulated guarantee of savings.
I mean, that makes sense to me, does it? I mean.
Well, I don't understand what, what the joke, I don't understand what the joke is here.
It says we're gonna have a guarantee, we're gonna guarantee you save money. How you measure what you save money is.
So stipulated just means assumed, you're just gonna assume you're gonna have some savings?
No, stipulated means that.
It's stipulating that you are going to have some savings.
Identifying upfront, I think.
Yeah, identifying it upfront.
Why does the school code say we have to measure and verify, and we have to pay overtime if the equipment doesn't meet the energy savings that was promised? Are we able to talk since she brought us into it by asking us a question?
No, no, this is between the board tonight. Thank you though for asking, appreciate it.
But afterwards, we can.
Well, you can talk among yourselves afterwards all you want, but.
No, if you can, on citizens' opportunity.
Opportunity, yes, yeah.
When they start a conversation to us.
Well, that's inappropriate for the board.
And that was inappropriate.
That's inappropriate, that's, I'm sorry, but, so, Steve, I still haven't, can I see that thing that you're referring to with the?
School code?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And which part was it here that we referred to?
Guaranteed savings part.
You have several things highlighted here, is there a?
Fifteen, or 519B1 dot two is the one that sticks out to me, on the second page highlighted in blue. Talks about how the savings guaranteed have to be necessary, at or at a level necessary to pay the cost of the measure that you're doing to save the energy.
And Dave, didn't you say that this has been approved by, or who'd you talk to about that part of it?
Our department, economic team.
Okay.
And their point was the same as, I did say along the 40-watt bulb versus 100-watt bulb, that's pretty easy. What's not easy is determining what the labor savings are in the O and M piece over immediate, which would be fixture requests.
Well, it's, and it says the next line here that's not highlighted, it says, "Energy savings may include energy reduction and offsetting sources of renewable energy funds, including renewable energy credits, carbon credits." I don't know if that has anything to do with this. But, I, I guess, what, we can get all the reports that we want and do all this, but, and, again, I don't think anybody up here who's on the board at that time is defending this. But what, what outcome do you wanna see on this? Is there an outcome to all of this?
Good question.
That is a good question.
I mean, we, we spent a heck of a lot of time, and Dave spent a heck of a lot of time trying to do this, but is there an outcome? I mean, what are we trying to do?
We're trying to wrap this up so we can put it on the shelf and know that it's accurate. We're gonna be paying on this for another 12 years.
Okay.
Because we were told it was gonna be a guaranteed savings. It's spelled out in the school code, and we haven't done anything for three years to try to get any of that savings back, or get any of that money back for the equipment that we bought.
Are you saying getting that money back from Amoresco?
Yep, they're the ones that, we sent the request for proposal out. All we were gonna do is just replace lights, why didn't we get a bid to replace lights?
I think we have a gentleman here who said that's exactly what he would've done.
I've received directions, a directive. This is the direction we're headed with this construction methodology. I wasn't given any leeway, I was told this was already. In fact.
You weren't even asked your opinion.
Well, I gave my opinion. I gave my opinion that there were savings to be garnered, and a reduction in the time to pay back, refer on investment. Doesn't seem to go very far.
Steve, would it be helpful if Dave provided the savings information that he did on those charts, for all the schools, for a specific amount of time, not for three years? Because he has, thinks he has to do as well.
Oh, I've seen the results.
From all, from all the schools?
Yeah, if you add them all up, we're about a million dollars short of our 2.2. Actually, I'm sorry, take that back, we're a million dollars short of our 3.1 that we have to pay back.
Does that include?
That includes the $65,000 a year for O and M.
Well, maybe we should verify that with.
If we wanna measure and verify, we can do that.
I don't wanna measure and verify, we've got the energy data, all we're looking for is dollars. We gave somebody 3.3 million or 2.2, and we're paying another 900,000 in interest. I'd like, I'd like to know whether we got our money. I think the community would like to know too.
And I would like to know.
Sure.
But I think we still need to take, make sure that, that we look at apples versus apples, we are not look, because, like I said, each one of these buildings, there've been other changes in these buildings that affect what our energy costs are.
The complexity of what you're asking me to do is so labor intense, that's why we went with stipulated.
Well, but the RFP says that the energy contractor's gonna do all that.
Gonna do all what?
All the measures and verify.
At, at an additional price.
Again, we, it was from what?
Like $300,000 more, I believe.
Well, it's, it were a million and a whole.
But, but it, that's why we agreed to stipulate it, so, because we didn't want to agree with the verify, because it was gonna cost us $300,000 more, and stipulating between wattage of bulbs makes.
Well, I agree, I can go down to REA and get a pamphlet that.
Absolutely.
If bulbs are gonna be more efficient.
Right.
But I guess my concern is, is where did that decision take place? Was there a box that say, we're gonna go stipulated or guaranteed?
Well, you're confusing guaranteed, because stipulated savings are guaranteed savings.
That's right. How you measure the savings is the question.
Maybe it's verifying or.
Guaranteed savings.
So when you go and buy a new car, and they just say you got a five, five-year, 100,000-mile warranty, and it's, and it's guaranteed, and you come back with a problem, they say, well, it was stipulated, we thought it would hold up? You gonna buy that?
It's not, it's not the same thing. That's, we're talking two different things. I mean, we're talking, we're talking buildings here that have gone through how many different upgrades and changes in the, in the systems that are in those buildings? How much more of the, with data enhancements and that sort of thing are out there? The energy, the energy that we use is, is far and above what we would've used if we still had those others, if we still had those others, uh, it would've been more if we still had those others, the other, excuse me.
Perhaps a pertinent question for Brown Hay and Stevens would be, is there anything we can do to recoup some of this money?
Well, true, yeah.
Maybe that's the pertinent question.
Can we ask him that next month then?
Harry said.
I just typed an email to him.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or will it?
I'll send the email right now, ask him.
No, if, uh, board member can request the superintendent to do, to do that.
But it's, it's.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep, thanks, Dave, appreciate it.
And sorry for the drilling, when you didn't even agree with the contract.
Okay, let me get back to my original meeting here.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, next on the agenda, Chad, telecommunications contract with CWLP.
All right, I initiated this originally back in July, and it's basically to upgrade our link, our physical link between the buildings in the district and our internet service provider. The current, right now, is running at rated 100 meg per second, megabytes per second. We need to actually upgrade it up to about 1,000 megabytes per second. This basically would allow us to have that room for expanded growth of our internet service. So, that's it, if you wanna switch it back over here.
Yeah.
So basically, this is a pretty diagram of what we're actually talking about. So the district sits on one end of it, our internet service provider, which is actually a different company other than the CWLP that sits in the middle, and they connect to the internet. What we're upgrading is that 100 meg link that's between the two, and it's just a physical link, it's not the bandwidth that we're actually talking about, all it is just physical fiber that runs between us and the internet service provider. So once that's in place, and we can actually contact ICN and have them bump up what they cap us at on our bandwidth, right now, we've had them both sitting at 100 meg, like I said, because we've had 100 meg link between them. By actually upgrading the bandwidth between them, we'll go up to about 250, if we're, expecting they will cap out it for the district right now. And if we keep adding computers to the district, of course, we have more and more users on it, we're having people banning that out, which is why we're looking for a 1,000 meg connection, basically. So, contract is basically stating that we'll pay $1,350 per month for the internet service, for the actual fiber bandwidth between us and CW or ICN. And that if we actually ever wanna go back down, we have the ability to go back down to 100 meg at less rate than what we're currently paying now, which is $1,130 per month on the 100 meg connection. So even if we don't utilize a full 1,000 meg, and we go back down to 100 meg, we have the option with actual cost savings.
And we have what now, 100 meg?
100 meg.
So, we're gonna go up 100 times?
Ten times.
Or 10 times for 200 bucks?
Okay.
Okay.
Like I said, we won't ever utilize that full gig bandwidth at first, it'll actually be twelve years before we actually get there, but anyways, have that ability to.
Sure.
You're wondering why the huge jump between them, because it's basically an upgrade out of fiber.
Any questions? Okay, if no question, need a, a motion then to approve this telecommunications contract with CWLP, as presented in your board packet tonight?
She'll move.
Thank you, Brandon. A second, please.
I'll make that motion, I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Susan. Call roll, please.
Your right.
Yes.
Worthing. Yes, Carter. Dan, Cup.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Reese's.
Yes, okay, thank you. Chad?
All right, the. Do I have to announce it?
I'm sorry, you're.
Did you already have?
Yep, you're.
All right, so the second part of this is, is actually a restructure of our technology department with the addition of a district network administrator. And what it basically is detailing is that I've had some discussions with Terry over the last several months. First time we initiated a conversation, I was talking about bringing in a contractor to do some of these tech work on the district. Gain the ability to have a great pool of knowledge when you do that, because the contractor has multiple different special needs, specialists in their department that he can use. But you become reliant on that company for support, which is basically what kind of kept me away from that issue.
me away from that issue. We also talked about just adding another tech assistant, which was at one point in time we actually reduced force and got rid of that position when the last attendant of that position left. Problem with having another tech assistant is I feel like you're still banditing the problem. If you have basically a bunch of techs out there, they're constantly just working with the end user on support. They're not actually fixing problems. They're showing them how to fix the problems themselves. And it happens to work a lot when you're having that, you like a remote support situation, they can always just remote it, do those types of things. But we could add tech to every building and still constantly be fixing problems by banditing. So my last iteration of this is that we came to just adding a network administrator. Purpose of adding a network administrator would be to mitigate all the job responsibilities between three people now, so just two, including myself in that mix. Originally, what it was is I have a systems administrator that we basically called the tech coordinator out there, and then we also had an action tech coordinator that was doing my old position. He did a lot of the, he's done a lot of the work in the district, basically getting classroom set up for integrating them out. The other person is basically providing, like, our K. Hicks in support. He's the go, he's the go-to person for that type of support. He's also the type of person for, basically, our Skyra administration. He's the one that I go to for that. So we've kind of already sort of divided those two positions and have them have specialties. But doing this restructuring is allowed, is basically a three-tier restructuring. It's basically the tier three, which is strategic, allows me to get into the nitty-gritty, basically, by analyzing the systems that we have in the district, and basically telling the district what we need to be implementing based on technology by going out researching the systems that we have in place, and then saying, "These are what technology means. We'll meet those, those needs that we have in the district," basically making it more efficient. So often, technology is requested during the course of the school year, and it's caused us to have a lot of problems. By having that tier three position, you're basically giving me the ability to go out there and say, "Before the year starts, these are the types of things that we need to be hitting on before school year begins." I mean, it basically gives me that extra time to be able to actually research out what those systems are and have that ability to get into it. But the existing sound of this isn't possible. I mean, we're basically just constantly trying to get up with where technology's going in schools. And basically, by building up this tier three structure, a three-tiered structure, the tier two structure is basically gonna be where our implementation takes place. So I'll design those systems, I'll get them all documented out, so all the techs have to do is basically, even I play tax, I mean, administrators, are basically gonna work with their, their tech counterparts to build out the systems that we design. And a lot of that's been, right now, basically loaded on my foot as long with the actual tier three responsibilities, something that we just, we can't keep doing in the social sector to learn from the board. So the, the end goal is that it basically gives me that ability to make specific jobs for specific people and hold them accountable for those positions a lot easier, whereas now it's kind of just a jumble of, you're gonna be working on this project, you're gonna be working on this project, you're gonna be working on this project, and we can't really work together in that type of fashion. It's, it's more of a, I'll, I'll try to get back to you as soon as I get done with this project type of deal. By having that extra tier on there and having those people that are actually doing all the integration, gives me that more flexibility to go around and say, "Are we meeting goals in this part?" The last part of it is, though, is I do have an amendment to what I actually proposed on the slides out there, and that is, I had some discussions earlier with, with Patrick, and that we do have the contingency fund in the district level that has about $60,000 left in it. We haven't even touched it all this year. I'd like to use that contingency fund to fund the position for the rest of this school year and then budget it into my budget for next year. We do have the budget available in the tech department, but I prefer that we not use it strictly for business purpose. I'd rather have that ability to, because it's for paraplanes and no supplies, so... That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions?
My question is, is kind of a bottom-line question. Is this going to help make sure that the tech, technology in our buildings are up and running on a consistent basis?
Yeah.
And if they need to be repaired, it is done within 24 hours in a timely manner?
I mean, right now, we're basically, I'm fixing things depending on what the hardware is out there this month. By having this position available, I'm basically going to be dedicating solely to repairs. So right now, we have techs that are basically a mixture of consumer, through customer support, and then, like I said, customer support, that's basically our department, and then actual repairers and things of that sort. So right now, there's no person that's solely dedicated to actually doing repairs. By adding this position, there's sole responsibility, it's going to be repaired. And obviously...
Okay. Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we should use...okay, first of all, tell me how much this position would be for the remaining months of the fiscal year?
For the range that it sits in, it's gonna be about $22,000.
Okay. So that leaves us 38, correct?
Correct.
And contingency. Okay, so are you pretty sure that you won't need to touch 38?
Well, which contingency is not really mine to touch. That's why I asked Terry and Magic about it, because it's...
And they said that, Carrie, that you're okay with that?
That he wanted to bring it to you guys for that.
How do you feel about that? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I mean, Chad's been talking about this for a long time, needing an additional person, and he really wanted to also get to know his skill set of his team, that he's, he has two new members on his team of the four guys that, that work for him. So, he wanted to get to know their skill set first, and then...
Well, I, you know, Chad, I, I trust your opinion, but the only thing I don't wanna have happen is that we start using contingency funds from now until the end of the year because we've run out of our previously budgeted accounts.
Like I said, this is one of those that, and this is why I kind of wanted to use the contingency. This is one of those situations that it's not that I happen very often.
Okay.
It took me this long to break to you because I know what it means.
He's been talking about it for a while.
So, I mean, that's not something I'm gonna use.
No, I'm not, I'm not directing the comments to you. I'm just saying generally, you know, we can't pull our contingency, I don't like using contingency funds to fund because we overspend on something else.
Sure.
And will this allow you to increase your skills on networking as well?
Did you mean the staff's skills in that?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming you would...
I'm pretty familiar with our network.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
There's nobody else that's gonna be able to touch our networking skills for that, but yeah. No, I mean, that's really what it is. It's getting that load off of me that I've been constantly...
Day to day.
I'm the only one that knows how to integrate every piece of this network together, and that can't happen. I mean, there's, there needs to be somebody else and stuff. And there's just too much workload for us to sit down and train. You know, we get that information just in the... Any other questions?
Anything, anything else? Okay. Thanks, Chad.
Yeah.
All right. There's a... Thank you. Oh, okay. Gotcha. Oh, gotcha. Internet. I need a motion then to approve the recommendation of the administration to hire a district network administrator and restructure the technology department, and approving the job descriptions as presented in your board packet tonight, and use the funds as presented this evening for that, for that new person. Need a motion to approve that?
I'd move to approve it.
Thank you. And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Susan. Call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cup?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Leesus?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Uh, next is our instructional items. 2014, 2015 school calendar.
We are asking, seeking approval for a one-year calendar right now. We're gonna turn around and try to work on a second-year calendar, but we're getting calls left and right, so the team has worked very hard. And we have a teacher from each building, two, a board member, Susan Worley, and two principals that have worked on this and tossed things around. What's up in the air is the park assessment window and how park is gonna go next year, since our kids are gonna be tested a lot in March, in the month of March through April, and then all month, the entire month of May. So we're doing some field testing. So we'd like to get through some field testing and then try to revisit and have a 215, 16 calendar. But those items that are listed there, we went back and forth on and took stuff back to staff and asked their opinion. Due to construction, we are gonna start for the first time in a long time after the state fair, and that was something that was very strong feedback from our staff.
And parents, too.
And parents, that we would wait until the 18th to start with staff, with the 20th being the first day for students. It becomes a balancing act with quarter-wise, with driver's ed in particular, because you at least need 40 days, because you have some new state mandates there. So we did the best we could do, and we always wanna end final exams before Christmas.
I have a question about that, too. Is that, I know this, and it really only, I don't, I think it affects the middle school, but mostly the high school with your semesters, where we have 12 days difference in the two semesters.
They were okay with that at the middle.
Yeah, it's more than nine weeks that we're concerned about than it is the semester.
Yeah, we have the same question.
More than nine?
More.
Each of the, about as of the nine weeks for this semester.
Okay.
The more the concern.
Well, you've got two, you've got, you mean for the quarters? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, three quarters per semester.
Yeah. And we're, we're doing okay with that on the...
That was one of our big questions. I had the same question.
Yeah. Well, Carrie and I talked about that, too. It just, and then again, with the, and I know this was brought up, but I just wanna mention it to everybody, too, that we, we've talked about this for a long time, and I know you know this, Jill, because I've talked with you about it, but more full weeks of instruction, because that's the way, that's the way our kids are learning, our kids learn best, and it's, uh...
The only thing that is not set is your school improvement days, and we'll get to that, those half-days. But, you know, it is tying our Easter to Easter, but the park window for next year starts March 9th through April 3rd, so it's very interesting. So we've just got a lot of things to decide.
March 9th to April 3rd?
It's the window.
Is for park performance-based assessment window.
Boy, that's a big window.
Yeah, it needs to be, if you're gonna do it online.
But our technology will be working fine.
I can probably tell you that we're probably gonna see people pencil the first year and watch everybody else do it, if we can. So...
Any other?
So we're just bringing this one-year calendar right now.
And we, and it is, it is in policy, I think, that we do, too, but like you said, we're gonna bring the other one as soon as you get this.
Yeah, we're gonna hold it in. Wait and see how the assessment window goes.
Wait and see how the field testing goes.
Yep, yep. No problem.
I just felt like there was a lot of unknown.
Lot of unknown.
Any questions? Thank you, Jill. Need a motion then to approve the 2014, 2015 draft of the school calendars presented in your board packet tonight?
I'd like that motion.
Thank you, Steve. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. And call the roll, please?
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cup?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Leesus?
Yes. Summer school 2014. Seems like it's a little cold to be talking about summer school.
The crazy winter we've had, it seems kinda funny you come here and talk about summer school, but, and not that I get overly excited about summer school, but I can't wait for it to get here. We are shifting summer school back to the high school this year for various reasons, mostly based on construction and such, so we'll be back at the high school. We've set the dates as June 4th to the 27th, and July 7th to the 30th, and I'm here to have the handbooks approved. We essentially have two handbooks for the summer sessions. We have the driver's ed, consumer ed handbook, and we have the course handbook. Nothing has really changed other than the date, and that's because essentially, we know what we've offered in the past, and so we put those in the book, and then we just kind of base it on enrollment. So we're asking for a certain number of teachers in each area. We basically ask that every year. Then when enrollment comes about, there'll be times where we don't need one of those because we don't have the kids signed up for the course and so on. So we haven't changed anything in regards to that. It's, it's a mix of remedial classes and some advanced classes, like government, so seniors can advance and take, get another elective in their senior year, that type of thing. But most of it's remedial for those kids who have some struggles throughout the school year and they need to retake a course or whatever. So I'm just asking for the approval of the handbook and essentially the same, same length of time, same number of teachers and so on that we had in the past, and we'll adjust as numbered dictate when we get registration.
Up or down, right?
Up or down. There's one correction needs to be, I mean, dates are correct, so when we make that approval, that'd be fine. It's on the little blue calendar up toward the top. I just need to, before we publish it, oh, that one doesn't color anyway. Color didn't show. I need to color in ten more boxes in the June, in the June calendar, so I'll make that correction, but those dates are correct up above from what we would offer. So, back at the high school, and basically the same concept that we've used in the past for several years.
Any questions? No questions? Okay. Thanks, Jenny. Need a motion then to approve the summer school handbook, both for general summer school and for the driver's ed, consumer ed one, and also a teacher request as presented in your board packet. It says here also enrollment information will not be available until late May, so we won't know all the particulars probably until then, so. Need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. A second, please?
I'm sorry, who made that?
Brandon. Second, please? Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please?
Yes. Carter?
Yes.
Cup?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
And Leesus?
Yes. Next, we have our treasurer's financial report. Patrick?
So, that's our, our first one, which, uh, makes sense. Everything's tracking. We talked about the ISB finance committee, so we're getting into a little bit of a rhythm and routine there about reviewing and answering questions. So everything's still tracking with where we thought we would be through the budget point in this time of year, since this is the end of January, expenses to the budgeted amount, so we're still in line. Anomalies at this point. And revenues, again, still tracking in the bottom. It just shows that the ongoing delay from ISB payments, close to $800,000, and that's still tracking today, still current. They're back as far as December 3rd, so greater than 60 days and counting on some of the payments that they owe. Not all of those go back that far, but some do. That's the farthest back that they go. So we're still missing about $800,000 from them. We will get, we'll see when we get it. And then the fund report is updated and revised with the audited journal entries, so it's We will get, we'll see when we get it. And then the fund report is updated and revised with the audited journal entries, so it's beginning to look cleaner, as I've been stating it eventually would. So we're getting there. Still working through a few issues with the auditors after we enter the entries, just a couple of things to work out with them, so we're just working on some of that. But it's much better and closer. I've added a chart in the bottom right-hand corner there, shows the contingency lines, so what was identified. We have had to meet it for some textbooks at one school, so that's the type of things that we have it there for. Everything else is still tracking. Investments are tracking. Projects are coming in under budget, so that's helping us fund future projects with referendum dollars. So, I mean, everything is looking as good as it can right now, and it's on track with what we thought with you. The other charts are there. If you want to see the charts, they just show you the same information in graph form, but nothing different. Most finance committee or anyone else has any questions?
Any questions? Comments from the finance committee?
A couple of things. Would you just make note where a person can find the statement of, you know, our statement that's posted?
It's on our board website, on the district website. There's a link on there for web-posted documents, and both the FY '12 and the FY '13, the two most recent, are both posted there for reference.
In case somebody wants to look at?
It was also posted in Clarion publicly, and it's also available on the ISB website in form as well.
Thank you.
And we have a paper copy here.
Any questions? Anything else?
Just a couple of comments. One, thanks, Patrick, for your work on this, and it's nice to view this monthly and see it tracking year-to-date, as was budgeted and has been expected so far, with no major, no major variations at this point, which is good. And also, just a looking-forward comment, looking forward to the earlier presentation of the PMA projections. It's going to be interesting to, and those were just numbers that were plugged in based on a lot of different assumptions, but it's going to be nice to start to use some of the good historical information we have to get a better five-year picture of where we're at. So I think that's going to help us a lot.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Patrick.
Oh, I have a comment. Carrie, are you happy with the progress to date on the budget?
Well, I mean, there's a lot to be done, and we've talked about the fact that we have two contracts that are up, and that we've had conversations about that. Just today, Jill and I, and Jen, Barham, and Teresa, all met with the buildings to talk about staffing projections. So those are some of the conversations that we have to have. We met with the middle school and high school to talk about staffing projections, so those are all conversations that are still ongoing and happen every time this year, so.
That's all the questions. I need a motion, then, to accept, or I'm sorry, to approve the treasurer's financial reports as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rick. In a second, please.
One second.
Thank you, Susan. And call the roll, please.
Cop?
Yes.
Mannix?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. Okay. Next, to roundtable under communications, and we have a couple of things going on there. So Linda, I think you wanted to discuss something with the board?
Well, there are two policies for the board to look at regarding board governance.
Both those policies were?
Policies were placed in, just a noted procedure. The policy committee has board members on it, as well as administration, and they routinely take a look at policies that are sent to us a lot of the time specifically for approval from, because of legal. And then there are also policies that come through that are specific to our district, such as our facilities use policy, or just policies that are specific to our district. The, any board member can bring a policy to the policy committee, which then looks at it, and it is finally reviewed by the board. The policy committee does not make the decision as to what policies are supposed to be adopted or not. They come to the board for the adoption. The policies come to the board for adoption. They are read, the first reading, and then the next month, they are the second reading, and then they are voted upon. So this is, the first time I have ever known this to occur, that we have two policies proposed by two board members. And the policies are, the one that I submitted, and was requested to submit it under my name, which is just fine with me, but it indicates that there are a lot of policies in our policy manual currently that give direction to board governance, such as the board elects someone to speak for the board, and that's typically the president of the board, and that's who the media goes to, and that person gives the opinion of the board. Other people can give their opinion, but it is their personal opinion and not, not the board's opinion. Another policy that we currently have is policy 2 dot 140. All the governance policies are under 2, and they vary from there. The policy, the superintendent shall establish the avenues of school staff communication. The Board of Education is committed to open and ongoing communication with its stakeholders, and recognizing that maintaining a two-way conversation with the community is a vital component to district operations. With that in mind, this is what our current policy is, with that in mind, staff members, parents, community members should submit questions and communications to the superintendent's consider, for the board's consideration, to the superintendent, I'm kind of paraphrasing here as I go, and then the superintendent will provide the board with those questions. Also, the policy 2.130, among other things, says the superintendent is the principal contact between the school board and the staff, and he or she shall act as spokesman for the staff insofar as school operations. When it is necessary for exceptions to this established policy, he or she shall submit matters to the school board for its determination, deliberation, and discussion. The policy that I am proposing, can you bring that specific up? I think it's up farther, Betsy. Okay, do you see proposal there? Unfortunately, it's on two pages of mine, but I think you could probably get a look at them on there. The policy that I am submitting for discussion, and I think the actual essence of what we're doing here by discussing the policy is embedded in what this says. Our discussion on AMARESCO is another example of concerns that people have, bring it to the board, and we will discuss it. In that discussion, we can direct staff through the superintendent, or here in this, we can say to Dave Murphy, "Dave, we really want this information. Please give it to us." And that gives everyone on the board the opportunity to know what is being requested, give the opportunity to say, and by the way, include da-da-da. "Oh, I don't think we need that information. We already have it in da-da-da." So the policy also, I am going to read it, but I want to give a, just an explanation as to part of it. It also says that the superintendent directs the staff, and the superintendent is the one who operates with our vendors, such as calling our attorney. Every time we call our attorneys, ching, 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 ching. And in order, and having everyone on the board know and understand, that is a question we need to ask our attorney, I think is pertinent to getting things done, keeping us informed, and also controlling our costs. I view this policy as being very transparent, and transparent is something that we all want, and the transparency needs to start at the board, and I think this policy makes that occur. The district is governed by a seven-member Board of Education. The board's powers and duties include the authority to adopt, monitor, enforce all policies for the management and governance of the district. That is in school code and in almost all governance policies that you might read. Official action by the board may only occur at a duly-called and legally-conducted meeting at which a quorum is present. Only while discharging their responsibilities through official actions of the board as a whole may board members be considered officials with jurisdiction over the operation of the school district, with the powers, authorities, rights, and responsibilities set forth in the Illinois School Code. In the discharge of those duties, board members act as a committee of the whole and not as individuals. An individual board member has no legal authority to speak for the Board of Education unless specifically authorized to do so by action of the board. Again, it's another policy we have. Further, an individual board member has no authority to direct or require services from administrative staff, other district personnel, vendors, and potential vendors of the district, unless specifically authorized to do so by action of the board. As stated in the board member's oath of office prescribed in the school code, a board member has no legal authority as an individual. Furthermore, it also is described in PA 090881. Each individual board member of the Board of Education will abide by the majority decisions of the board. The majority of what is in here is in current policy, in the current policy that you would find in the school code. The additions to here are clarifying for new board members, old board members, people who are on the board when they come in. Board members are elected every four years, so there's pretty good chance there's going to be new board members every two years. They're elected on a four-year rotation, so every two years, there's going to be new board members. This is pretty specific about what the governance policies are. It is intended to clarify the role of the school board member, and is founded in statements made by the oath taken by school board members and other current governance policies. The reason this is set, I wanted to set this forth was for transparency purposes, that if there are things that come up that need to be discussed, then somebody needs to say, "You know what? We need to discuss AMARESCO. We need to discuss that." And as a board, we can then discuss it in a meeting in which the public can also hear those discussions. We can, at that point, direct the staff through the superintendent. We can say, "Mrs. Ruby, we really need more information on this. We want you to ask whoever, Patrick, Dave Murphy, to put this information together, and then bring it back so that we, as a whole board, can understand what's going on." I've learned a lot from the discussions we've had on AMARESCO tonight. Heard lots of discussions that have been very informative to me and helped frame my decisions, and I think this policy clarifies those responsibilities.
Any other, any questions of?
Do you want to have a, maybe, how do you want to handle this, Linda? Have your presentation, have people ask you about that, or have mine right now, and then?
What would you like to do?
Makes no difference to me.
Why don't you go ahead, and then we'll have a discussion? And it'll be easier to discuss two things rather than just one.
Okay. Well, I am presenting alternative number two, which is the, the policy wording of press, which is under the auspices of the Illinois Association of School Boards. And districts can have a subscription, and press, press services basically provides that wording. Now, if you could move down a page, Betsy. There's, there's the press, there's the press wording. Linda and I are in agreement on some points. It's well-known, it states here, that official action by the board may only occur at a duly-called and legally-conducted meeting at which a quorum is present. Basically, a board member has no legal authority to act as an individual. What this version does not prohibit a board member to do is to come and ask questions based on their skill set, based on their past work experience, and ask those questions with their training in mind on any issue at hand, and I have done that. Now, my concern is, is that I would not presume to answer or make a vote on curriculum and instruction topic. I would respect a board member's opinion that this is of importance. All the questions, all the analytical reviews that I have asked for, I believe are important. Furthermore, what the press service does not do is require a board vote before a topic can be looked into. And I don't think, I don't think voters would appreciate having a new board members sitting back and proceeding, must proceed, the, how does that say? The, this is from Linda's memo, and the work of the school district must proceed while new members to the board acclimate themselves to current issues facing the board and the policies and procedures that govern our schools.
That is not in the policy. That's part of the rationale.
Correct. But I'm using, that's what it says, my, my?
Rationale.
Correct. I'm just using your words, the rationale.
Right.
And that's a very important statement, because I would find it hard to believe that all stakeholders who vote in new members or vote out old members would want their choice to sit back and acclimate themselves to current issues facing the board. So I am requesting that the press version of Board of Education governance be the preferable policy to adopt. And really, it's now up for discussion.
Right, it is a board discussion. It is a board discussion. I would like to say, as, as a? All of us have asked questions during board meetings to clarify information. This doesn't prohibit that.
Well, it does. In actuality, you, you use the word determination. So, for example, if I came to the board and said, "I would like to look into project X, Y, and Z, because I think there's, we can garner some money there." Now, do I first ask that question, and the board votes that says, "Yes, you may call up Patrick to get some numbers," or do I have to? See, my difficulty is, I think this needs to be looked into. Then I have to go to the board and ask their permission. Can I, you know, I think this needs to be looked into. The problem is, none of you have accounting skills and financial experience like I do. So to me, having the board vote on whether or not my opinion of a needed evaluation is sort of like having me tell Jill, "Oh, you know, here's the latest in curriculum instruction." I know nothing of curriculum and instruction. I know numbers, accounting, and finance. That's what I find so difficult.
You know, I understand your concern about voting, and I think that is an adjustment we can make, because I don't think we should vote on it. But I do think if you come and say, "Oh, I think we need to look at this financial grant, we need to get money for this grant," and we all say, "Hey, tell us about it. This is my thoughts on it." You know, as a whole board, we can do that, so we're all informed as to what is going on, and we act then in concert with each other, as opposed to separate silos.
Well, in, in essence, I think voters look at the composition of the skill set of the current board, and, for example, your expertise is in curriculum and instruction. I wouldn't, and my expertise is in numbers and finance. So we're not in silos, but then there's this underlying basis of expertise, and I think board members need to respect that among themselves. And I'm happy to say that you would forego the board vote.
Yeah.
Because that's clear.
I understand that. By action of the board, sufficiently authorized to do so by action of the board, and action of the board could be a vote, but it could be also, whoa, go ahead. I think that's, and if it's more clear not to have the word "action," I think, I think that's fine. But, you know, your example of curriculum, if we were introducing a new textbook, and I knew something about the textbook, it would be very appropriate for me to be able to say to the whole board, "This is a textbook. I've looked at it. These are the things that I think are good about it. These are the things that I think are not good about it. What do you think? What questions do you want to ask me about it?" And then, as a whole board, we can decide if we need more information, if we can go on.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I don't, you know, I'm amenable to what the the board thinks, but I absolutely, wholeheartedly disagree that board members have to vote on any suggested-
And I think, I think in the policy committee, you and I can sit down and, and work some of those out and bring the first readings to the board. But again, I'd like to know the board thinking.
My only concern would be, anytime I would ask a director or principal a question, and they have to spend time answering it, that would be requiring services of them, would it not? So, I might, I try, anytime I have a question, to ask Carrie first, and she directs me there. But I would assume it would be, it would make logical sense, if I knew it had to do with buildings, that I could then directly ask Dave that question. I don't, I think this limits us a little bit on just finding out information and not troubling the board when it's just an FYI situation, versus something where you're, where you have a, something that you need to move forward, like a change in the budget, change in curriculum. You know what I'm saying? So just my act of calling them and asking them a question, or emailing them and taking their time, that's requiring services, and this technically, as it's written, bars me from doing that, without waiting for a board meeting to discuss it and ask permission.
Well, I'm not sure it really does, because I think what it, what it's asking is that those, those be directed, if you've got a question. What would you do now if you had a question? You'd come to Carrie.
Right.
And usually, I mean, that's the way it should go, because Carrie, these people report to Carrie. And they've got certain responsibilities that they've got to perform on a day-to-day basis. And if they're, if they are looking into a number of different things that board members want, then, you know, they kind of put that as a, as a top priority, as opposed to some of the other things they might be doing. We have to, we have to have a funnel for some of this stuff, because if seven people are talking to, are talking to administrators without Carrie knowing about it, and without the administration knowing about it, it can, it can be a problem. I mean, it can be an issue there that, that they're trying to satisfy the requests of the board, and it may be affecting some other things that, that they should be doing instead of that.
And I think, Brandon, the difference, and this is a quantitative difference, and how you would define that in a policy would be something that Susan and I would have to look at. But calling them and asking a question is not what this is saying. Calling them and saying, "You know, I need, I need a five-page report on something." That, that is what this is directed at. It is not asking a question. But I think-
It's wordsmithed a little.
Wordsmithed, to do that. But that's what it goes to, that you, that an individual board member shouldn't go and ask, shouldn't call the attorney unless it goes through Carrie.
And no one has.
Well, that's just an example. That's just an example.
No, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Well, I think, I think that we cannot, we cannot make a motion during roundtable.
No.
Nobody was planning on doing that.
But we need to have an understanding from the majority of the board, what their opinion is. Do you want Lynda and me to go back and try and figure out, you know, something that works? Because if the majority of the board wants this very strict policy, then let's hear it. Or if you want it to be a little bit broader, please express your-
I think Lynda has the right idea, and I think it needs to be, as you said, Lynda, I think you need to kind of wordsmith it a little bit and take, you know, kind of go through some of those things.
Has most documents, it's-
Yeah. And you said earlier, you know, some of that press stuff that we get, is, we get them, a lot of that stuff is because of things at the legislature, and legally, what we have to do, and why have eight hundred and some school districts, and I don't think everybody's a member of it, obviously, but why have a number of school districts try and put these things together when we can use their service?
Because there's a question, it's like-
Yes. It has to be, but when it comes down to individual, it's just like, our dress, our policies and dress code are going to be different than maybe some others. Our policies for electronic communications are going to be different than others. There's a, there's a whole list of things that are different than what press services comes out with, because we have to, we have to identify what our district needs are, and then put together those policies that will address the districts, the, this district's needs, so.
Well, okay, so what's the protocol? Because I want to make sure I understand the protocol before we move on. That is, Lynda rewords it and-
No, you and I.
Okay.
Together.
Okay. So, that's fine. And then, we'll, it may not be ready next month, because we'll deliberate on this.
Oh, we're going to be around a long time, so it doesn't have to be-
Yeah, we'll work on it, we'll work on it.
But I, I think it's the opportunity for us to be transparent among ourselves, that we can ask and we can talk about things among ourselves. And, and we talk among ourselves in a public setting. It's a meeting in the public, it's not a public meeting. And that opportunity, and that, not opportunity, we always have that opportunity, that responsibility to do that is what this is about.
That's good, that you're working on this, because I think it's important to understand that if we bring something to the board, we shouldn't have to have board approval to validate any kind of concern the community has. And if they've got an issue that we need to bring forward, well, I got to see if the board's going to vote on it.
No, no. What, if somebody's-
We got to specify what we mean by direct or require services.
Okay.
We got to make sure we understand that we don't have to get a vote to bring a concern to the-
Absolutely not.
To the administrator. Then it does look like we're hiding something.
Oh, no, absolutely. I think, in fact, I understand what you're saying, Steve. But if there's a community concern out there, then it should be the board's concern.
Absolutely.
And bring to the board and say, "You know, look, this is what I'm hearing. What are we going to do about this? What are your ideas?"
But to have a board vote and say, "Well, we decided that."
I think the vote, I, action here is not a good word. I think it's a wordsmith.
Correct.
It isn't a vote. We shouldn't vote. We should discuss it.
Correct.
And now, everybody then has the opportunity to know where we stand.
And hope we're not here till midnight every night, because there may be a lot of stuff being brought to the table.
That's right.
We have to discuss.
That's right. Better to discuss it in the open.
Absolutely.
And transparency, I think begins with us, and that's-
Yeah, I think you're on track.
Is the board all right with us going back and taking a look at it? With combining both? Are you comfortable with doing that?
Yeah, I think we need to do that. We'll work together.
We will, we will.
And I have-
We've worked together.
We've worked, we'll work together.
We have, and we will continue to.
Okay. Thank you.
But, well, I, I learned a lot from our discussions tonight.
Well, thank you both for your hard work. I know it's, it's quite a challenge sometimes to come up with, with policies like that.
You know, as an administrator, just as thinking about board members calling, I have worked under eleven superintendents. And I had many superintendents that said, "As an administrator, you are not to talk to a board member. If a board member calls you, you tell them to call me." That wasn't the best thing. I'm not saying that's the best thing.
Not the right answer, probably.
Not the right answer, but I'm saying it's not unusual for administrators to be not always talking to board members. And that was no positive.
I think there, as you said, though, too, Lynda, there has to be some discretion on what goes out to the administrators. You know, like Brandon said, if it's a question, simple question, then that's fine. But if it's request to have some kind of report done, or I need this, or I need that, then that's got to go through, through the superintendent, because that's, that's where all that should start, so. Okay. Anything else on that, on roundtable?
Can I add something on roundtable? I just, I just want to say to the, the administrators and the directors, we're, we're still working on our 360, or our superintendent evaluations. We're not done yet, but we appreciate your comments, and we are taking them seriously. I know, I know there was a lot of stuff mentioned in there that was important to you, and we are looking into it all, so. Appreciate you filling them out. And we're going to get this completed here pretty quick, so. Thanks for-
Our checklist gets, our checklist gets longer and longer.
Okay. Anything else for roundtable?
I, I would just like to say that also, it takes a lot of courage to decide that you're going to step up to a line and be forthcoming, as obviously you all were. So, again, I, I thank you as well. I guess Lisa, she wasn't able to make it tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Lisa wasn't able to make it tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Carrie, anything from your point of view?
No.
No? Okay. We have an item here, future meeting dates. Tuesday, tomorrow, I don't know if any of you are planning on attending this IASB meeting tomorrow night, Northfield Inn Suites Springfield. If you haven't done so and you want to go, haven't reserved a spot, you can call Joe tomorrow, probably, and she can, she'll give you a hard time, but she'll take care of it for you. Tuesday, March 4th, we have our board team and our BCEA negotiation staff. It's a closed session meeting, six o'clock. As everybody knows, we're negotiating two contracts right now with BCEA, and then the ESP staff also at the same time this year. Monday, March 10th is our personnel meeting with closed session, 5:15 regular meeting, 6:30. March 24th is our regular March board meeting. And then Thursday, March 27th, we have a special board meeting. It's a board self-evaluation with gentlemen from the IASB who will be leading us in that, in that endeavor. Any meetings I missed that we, we haven't said all of them yet, but, so. Busy, busy month ahead.
What about the superintendent's evaluation meeting? We don't have that on there, do we?
No.
Let's get, let's get data.
I haven't even looked over anything yet, so I-
How about sometime, we really-
In a week, maybe?
Yeah. Let's look at, see if we can do something, maybe next Monday.
Because I think all the information has been gathered and, and collated, and we just need to-
It's important that we wrap that up.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. We'll take a look at that, get an email out to everybody tomorrow, probably. Thank you, Lynda.
Maybe in the next week, ten days.
Yep. Okay. Any other meetings? All right, then, it's an opportunity for citizens or for visitors to address the board tonight on any, concerning any topic. Anybody wish to address the board tonight about any topic?
I do.
Yes, sir. If I could, have you state your name, and we could limit it to five minutes, and, you know, information for the board and that sort of thing.
My, my name is Grady Ravitch, I'm a taxpayer in this district. I'm very disturbed by what I heard tonight about that last call. When Steve posed the question, and you, Mr. Jim, said, "What do you want me to do?" Well, when a, when a public official signs a document without the board's approval, in my book, that's misconduct. And why you can't go and investigate what's going on, especially after what happened in the audit finding, to take care of this matter, you know, I don't get it. And I want to know what you guys are going to do about it. You're letting a guy slide that we've already had audit findings that say he took money from us, okay? You've got a guy that signed a contract that none of you guys can verify why he signed it. Okay, you're a board. You've got a director of public work sitting over here saying, "I didn't know what to do. There were two different things. I didn't know what to do." Well, why isn't he coming to the board and talking to you guys? How could you let a $2 million piece of, of funding come across here without you stepping up and saying what happened? Because you talked about it in April, but then you didn't talk about it in June. I don't get it. Can, can you address that, Mr. Newses?
Not tonight, I cannot, no.
Okay. That's fine, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Yes, sir.
Name Jim, my name's Dwayne Searan. Kind of like Greg, I'm a little bit disturbed by what I heard tonight. While during the presentation about Amaresco, I did a quick Google search over there on my iPhone, and those T-12 lights that were supposedly outlawed in 2010 are available for $29.95. You can get four footers, eight footers, 32 watt, 40 watt, 75 watts. And if you're concerned that the ballasts are available, they're online, too. I don't know what that means. I just thought it was neat to look it up. As far as Lynda's comment that a community's concern should be a board's concern, I think you nailed it. So as far as the technology presentation, weren't we told three years ago, not by you, by the former technology director, that these virtual desktops that we spent a million five on would get us through the next five to eight years? And now, it seems like every board meeting I attend, we're improving more technology spending. BCEF is buying Google Chromebooks like they're going out of style. It seems that while you're trying to get dollars back from Amaresco, you might try to get some back from AOS also. It's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board tonight? Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate your comments tonight. Anything else from the board? I need a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Steve. And all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you, everyone.